Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors for our September 27th, 2016, Board of Supervisors meeting. Can we please have the roll?
Supervisor Foye, Supervisor Long, Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Zaragosa, Supervisor Parks.
Here. And at this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Long, would you like to lead us?
Senator Hart, ready to give.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to our next agenda item, which is the approval of the minutes, we're so fortunate to live in a county with wonderful people and incredible employees and our brave law enforcement and public safety officers. And we, over the last week, had a very tragic accident that led to the death of our firefighter engineer, Ossler. And I'm asking our fire chief if he would come up and tell us a little bit about him, and then we'll call this our board comments, because I also know Supervisor Foye has a closing in honor of Engineer Ossler.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Mark Lorenzen, County Fire Chief. And yes, on Wednesday, September 21st, probably about 6:45 in the morning, I received the worst call a fire chief ever could get, and it was not only the worst day in my career, but likely the worst day in everybody's career in the Ventura County Fire Department. Ryan Ossler was killed when the water tender he was riding in on the fire up in Lompoc, the Canyon Fire overturned, and he died on impact. He is pictured there, Ryan was 38 years old, he's pictured there with his wife Jen and his daughter Amanda and son Brandon. Ryan worked for us for 18 years, started as a 20-year-old man on our hand crew, and after a number of years, made his way into the firefighter ranks and promoted to engineer and followed in the footsteps of his father Ralph, who tragically also died from a job-related illness in 2002. And both their names will be on our memorial out on our lawn come November. It was obviously just a terrible tragic day, but I can't tell you how much my heart broke and how almost, how proud I was of how not only our organization rose and embraced everybody, including Ryan's family, but how everybody in our county family and our law enforcement brothers and sisters, and really the whole statewide fire service and law enforcement community really rose. It's obviously a hard time for our family, this is truly a first for us and hopefully a last. We have a number of events planned, probably, the biggest one will be on Monday, October 3rd, at 11:00 a.m. at Calvary Chapel in Westlake Village. That's where the services will be for the Ossler family, and then interment will be at Caneo Mountain Memorial Park after that. Again, thank you, all of you, for reaching out, and we have embraced the Ossler family, they are completely overwhelmed with our support, and we always talk about our members being part of the larger family, and never has that been more true than today, and I know the Ossler family feels that. With that, I'd be open for any comments or questions.
Supervisor Foye, do you want to do the closing in honor?
Yes, I do, would like to close in honor of Ryan, and that's a tough deal, you see these young kids like that without a dad, and it's tough, no matter what, they're gonna suffer, but we appreciate that they're willing to go out and do those things for all of us in this community, that we appreciate that. So, I do want to adjourn in memory of him, and then also understand that the Ventura County Professional Firefighter have created a memorial fund. Things are gonna be different for this family, and so whatever we can all do to help this family is something, besides coming around, whatever the long-term requirements they're gonna have for these kids without a father working is gonna be important, so it's a very difficult type. So you can go on their website, you know, from the Professional Firefighter Association, and if you want to contribute to this, that'd be wonderful, so. It's a tough time for this county, and just, like you say, Mark, first time, that's just, it's difficult, so there's not much you can say.
Thank you. Can't ask for more beautiful families, and it's good to see the support, and our hearts do grieve for him and his family and his colleagues and everyone who knew him, so thank you for that, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
At this time, then, we'll go on to our next agenda item, and that is item four. We have a motion and a second. If you please vote. And now we'll go to our agenda review, and this with is Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Item 30, Human Services, receive and file a report back on continuum of care reform. A revised PowerPoint has been submitted. There's also an addendum agenda, a regular agenda item, item 35, Health Creatancy, ratification of three amendments to the Master Software License and Service Agreement with Cryza, and that's it.
Thank you. Are there any other requests or changes to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as revised? We have a motion and a second, if we could vote? Thank you. Well, we could definitely use some inspiration this morning, and I think we have that with Michael Grossman, our Ventura County K-9 Search and Rescue. If you'd like to come on up, and I know you have some friends with you, too. The Sheriff's K-9 Search and Rescue Team was formed in 1988, was with strong support from then Sheriff Sergeant Earl Matthews. They provide assistance to local, federal agencies, good morning, in the search for and the recovery of lost and missing persons. They're also canine-trained in area search, trailing, and human remains detection, and the handlers are an all-volunteer team that dedicate a considerable time and energy to train the dogs, their own funds to attend professional training workshops throughout California and the United States. And all Ventura County K-9 team members are volunteers, not compensated for their work, including the dogs. If you'd like to, tell us who you've brought and let us know about how the program works.
Thank you very much Supervisor Parks and Board. My name's Mike Grossman, and this is my partner, Ann Anderson. Ann is the captain of the Search and Rescue K-9 Team. On behalf of the entire K-9 Search and Rescue Team, thank you for having us here this morning. We are, we're comprised of all volunteers, we specialize in three different types of search. We specialize in area search, where our dogs go out and find any live victim that's out in the wilderness or in the urban environment. We specialize in human remains detection, which obviously everyone knows what that is, but it's a necessity in today's world, just to bring closure to the family. And then last but not least, with the bloodhounds, we specialize in tracking, whether it be for critical missings or criminal tracking. Our team is a little different than most sheriff's departments, being that we run everything with our bloodhounds. We run criminal as well as Alzheimer's and critical missing lost children. Just last year, we had three walk-up finds, which in a canine's career is quite an amazing thing. Typically, we don't just walk up, it's not like in the movies where every time a dog is deployed, we walk up and find the person, and we celebrate and go home. It's not like that. You could go your entire career without a walk-up find or without a find at all. Mainly what the K-9 team is used for is direction of travel, more than anything. You get out on a search, and there is, you know, a lost child, take for instance, last year, Sammy Evans, 10 years old, 102 degrees outside, he went missing, he was missing for seven hours. We did a walk-up find on him, he was barefoot, just in jeans. So, this is up in Ojai. Typically, though, what we do is we use the dogs to get direction of travel. We have a search party of X number of people, let's just say 30 to 40 people, we have no idea where they went, they can walk 360 degrees from their home. We utilize the bloodhounds and their acute sense for tracking, and we follow where that child left the house from the point last seen and where he walked to. That narrows it down quite a bit, and we can focus more of the resources in that direction. Not saying we're eliminating the rest of it, but we could put more deputies, more search and rescue personnel in that direction. In this case, it worked out perfectly, we tracked him about a mile and a half, and when I found, I personally found him, when I found him, the first thing I asked him is, "Where you headed?" And he said, "I'm walking home." I said, "Except home is backwards, you're walking the opposite direction." He'd been walking for seven hours looking for home. It was only a mile and a half away, he was dehydrated, confused, and thank God we had search and rescue, and thank God we had K-9. That's how we found him, we eliminated him off multiple avenues along the highway, and that's where we are today. So, it's an amazing asset the county has, and I hope they use us as much as they can because it is a free asset, and the dogs love to work, this is all they care about in life. So today, we have Morgan, and Morgan is a six-year-old bloodhound, she'll work for about another four years before she retires. And down at my feet right now, making all the noise over here, this is Dino, Dino's an eight-year-old American field lab, his specialties are human remains, where Morgan's is tracking and trailing. So, thank you very much for having us.
Could you tell us what a walk-up find is?
A walk-up find would be basically, you deploy the dog on a scent article, you track him for X number of miles, and you actually come up to a person, you don't know if it's the correct person, hopefully you have enough description on the subject. The dog will actually indicate on the person, will actually walk up, for instance, for the bloodhounds, they'll do what we call a sniff and dismiss, they'll walk up to a person, they'll take that scent, and what they're trying to do is match that scent to the scent article that you had from the start. If those two scents match, the dog should paw the person, slap the person with their paw, telling us, the handler, this is the correct person we're looking for. That is what we call a walk-up find, where the dog actually physically finds a person. A lot of times, the person's not, no longer there. An instance of criminal tracking, say where someone's running from the law, we'll go out and track that person, and not too many people stick around at the crime scene anymore. It's not, they have phones, cellphones have changed the world in general. Usually they get rides away from the scene of the crime, so a lot of times, what we'll do is we won't get that walk-up find, but we'll get enough evidence for the detectives to do an investigation, where we'll actually track to the pickup location where they got into the car. Not gonna be a walk-up find, but it's still a find to the dog because he correctly identified the area. And this happens more than, more than you think, where we actually go to video surveillance, looking around different homes, gas stations and stuff like that, and later on, because of dog evidence, we can actually prove, yes, the guy got into the car at that exact location where the dog stopped. Dogs have no reason to lie, so it's pretty self-evident when they're out of scent because they just stop. They'd be working fine, all of a sudden, the dog will stop, 100%, and you'll start looking at things, hey, why did he stop? What's the reason behind it? A lot of times with lost children or elderly, they typically get onto a bus, it's just the way it is, the bus has to take them, they can't, they can't turn them away, so a lot of times, we'll look around and go, "Why did we stop?" "Oh, we're at a bus stop." So we'll tell the detectives right away, "Hey, start looking at the buses, call the bus people and say, 'Hey, did you guys see a guy that looked like this?'" That's primarily what the dogs are for, is direction of travel and small key evidence, so. Any other questions?
I just find, you know, in this day of such high technology, they can do anything, can't do what these dogs do and how special they are for our force, so it's great to have them helping our law enforcement officers do their job, and particularly helping, you know, people who have been lost, you know, you're helping the victims, so, thank you so much.
I think the most amazing thing Supervisor is, most people don't realize what the bloodhound's capabilities really are. That dog can search somebody a month after they left that scene, which, it's almost unheard of, but both Ann and myself both have a confirmed find literally four weeks after murder was, was actually committed, off of two small bullet casings, 22-size cartridge. The scent was taken off of those casings, and ran a month later, and the dogs, both dogs, on their own, went to the person's house and alerted on the house.
Oh, my gosh.
And the guy was taken into custody the next day. So, it is an amazing thing, and it's an incredible resource.
Mike, how long does it take to train?
It's always a good question. With the labs, typically about six months. With the bloodhounds, it can be up to two years. It's a much more complex study, it's DNA-based, as opposed to just natural scent, so, they're a little bit slow learners anyway. They have one God-given gift, and that is their nose, their intellectual ability after that is questionable. We do not teach them any kind of obedience at all, reasoning being is when they start trailing or tracking, we want them to focus only what's ahead of them, and that's the scent. We don't want direction from the handler at all, we don't want to influence our dogs. Where with this dog, it's a little bit faster because they work on their own, we give them little hand signals, they go off and search, they'll report back, so it's a little easier with the bloodhounds, with the Labradors and the Shepherds. Bloodhound's a little bit more complex, it's a whole different story.
And the reward is a treat?
Reward for, for the bloodhound is strictly treat-based, and the actual find with praise. With the labs, it's only toy, 100% interaction between the handler with the toy, playing a little tug-of-war.
Fantastic.
And they'll work, we've had the dogs out working for six to eight hours straight, and there's no quit. This is how they are all the time. This is not a dog you want to take home with you, by the way. Unless you don't mind I'm jogging over the furniture.
Well, thank you, Ann, for an excellent, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming, it's great to see.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I didn't even think labs were particularly intelligent, so that shows you where they are in this.
If they can, if they can follow, if they can follow the scent on a bullet casing a month later, I'm just wondering how long they could follow the scent on our seven-year-old sturdy socks. Just, I mean, it could be years.
Well, it's funny because the bloodhounds, FBI uses them six months later to what we call doing station IDs or location checks, where they'll actually go to a location and verify that scent pad to see if that suspect had ever walked in, that's six months after, so yeah, your scent theoretically, when you walk away, stays there pretty much permanently. It's amazing, it's just an amazing thing.
With all the other scents, all the other, wow, that's.
We do what's called elimination, so when we start a trail, and we have that scent pad, let's just say we go to my house, and I'm the missing person, and they collect scent from me, there's also gonna be my wife's scent, my kid's scent, and everything else, what the dog has to do is has to eliminate scent. So prior to starting that trail, we present the, we present all the people around, the kids, the family, to the dog, and the dog will actually sniff them, and he'll dismiss their scent off of that scent pad. So they're smart enough to, they're smart enough to disqualify certain aspects of that scent pad. That's why it takes two years to train that dog. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Cool. Next item, then, is our consent agenda items, and these are 11 through 21. We have a motion and a second, if we could please vote? Then we'll go on to our public comments, and we have two public comment cards. First is Kelly Long, if you'd like to come on up.
Hello, is this on? Okay. Hello, thank you Chair, Board of Supervisors, and Exec Team. I'm here to talk about elections. Everyone probably was watching the presidential election yesterday, but I want to make sure today we're focusing local. So first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for funding our website for Elections Office, and also our app. The app has been great to make sure that you know if you're registered or not, has access to register if you haven't voted yet, and for me, as a candidate for a county supervisor, it also tells me how many days till the mail-in ballots go in, which is accordingly 13. Days to November 8th is 42. There's a lot of wonderful things going on with our community, trying to make sure that we're educated on our candidates on the local level, from supervisor, school board, city council members. I wanted to also talk to you today about some forums coming up, and make sure that we invite all of our community to them. The first one is tonight at Camarillo City Hall, it starts at 6:30, and what the first one is, is Measure C versus Measure F, which is a county issue that I would like to make sure everyone is educated on. The second one is October 5th for the League of Women Voters, and that's in Santa Paula Community Center. The first forum will be at 6 o'clock, which is on our supervisor candidates. The last one is the Latino Issue Forum on October 6th, that also is in the Santa Paula Community Center, and that will be for the two supervisor candidates as well. So I'd like to welcome everyone to read up, come to our forums, also KDAY TV has recorded the forums, so if you'd like to find out more about your candidates, please do, there's a large ballots, sample ballot that has gone out, and I hope everyone doesn't take the night before to peruse it. I hope you're educating yourself, talking to your friends, some people even had neighborhood get-togethers, and really just go over the ballots. You don't have to agree with who you're voting for, but just educating yourself on who and what is going on, and making sure that you know who to elect on Election Day for November 8th. So please, if you're not registered for voting, please do it so. Also, again, on our website, you can check to see if you are registered and where you are, and also the polling information. As you get to it, please make sure you calendar voting. So I know our days are busy on November 8th, and at the end of the day, and you're, you're lost track of time, you forget to go to the polls, so please, make sure you go there and vote. So thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Brian Lee Renshaw.
Brian Lee Renshaw, Ventura, good evening, or good morning, I'm sorry, excuse me. Good morning, Honorable Chair, Supervisors, staff, citizens. You know, ordinarily, when I speak before our elected officials, I am fighting for a general interest to the community, and in a way, I guess that's exactly what I'm doing here, but this is a little different because it involves me directly. On September 15th, I had an appointment to do my Calcrash reappointment certification with my caseworker. I went to 4651 Telegraph Road to meet my caseworker, got there a little bit after three, parked my bike, went into the building, saw the guard, said, "Hello, how are you doing today?", and went to open the door, when a gentleman said, "What's in your bag?" And I turned around, and I saw a gentleman on the public side of the counter, he had clothes, clothes pulled in front of him on the counter, and I looked at him, I said, "It's none of your business." And I went into the door and started logging in on the little computer on the wall, and then the uniformed security guard whom I just greeted came in and asked me, "What's in the bag?" This is the bag. And I told him, "It's none of your business." And he told me, "Well, I think that you have food in that bag." And I said, "There's not food in the bag, and it's none of your business." And he goes, "Well, I need to search that bag." I said, "No, you don't." He goes, "Yes, I do." And I was afraid this was gonna become a real problem, so I acquiesced to his requirement to search my bag, and I showed him what was in the bag, and what was in the bag, there's another bag which had my documentation for my recertification appointment. I didn't like getting searched, I wasn't breaking any laws. As a matter of fact, anybody that knows me knows I bend over backwards to be a good citizen and obey the law. I just go end over end to try to do that. There are people that just love me to break the law, they just love it, they want me. But I don't, and I don't think that any citizen should be searched at the County Human Services Agency facilities for suspicion of possession of food. Now, I understand it's your policy that consuming food in there is against policy, and that anyone who is consuming food in there will be asked to cease and desist, and if they don't, they can be asked to leave, and if they don't, then you can forcibly remove them if they persist. I don't have issue with that. What I have issue with is that clients, such as myself, that are impoverished, that are, require help from the county just to eat, that we don't relinquish our Fourth Amendment rights under the U.S. Constitution just by being poor and accepting your help. You can be searched over here in the court building, that's been declared by the courts, peace officer can search you. That's another thing, I don't like the idea that an unsworn security guard is trying to search people. If you know the law, there are very slim requirements where a citizen can actually search another, for instance, if they have probable cause to believe a felony is in progress, and they're doing their civic duty to apprehend a felon, you can do it. But you can't do it under suspicion of possession of food. And you know, a lot of people like me, I'm not gonna leave my food on my bike, I could have come from Wincle, I could have had food in the bag. The rules against consuming it, not possessing it, and I'm not gonna leave it on my bike because it's gonna get stolen, I'm gonna take my food inside. If I'd shopped at Wincle, I would have had food in my possession, which is not a crime. So what I'm here to do is to give you my actual formal complaint about being unreasonably searched in violation of my Fourth Amendment rights by merely attending a reappointment meeting under the suspicion of having food, and it's all written out here, and what I'm hoping that you all do is look into this matter and rectify it. You know, I walked into this building the same day, dressed the exact same way I was, with the exact same articles, now I wasn't searched, that's the way I want to come in here. I just want to come in here, do what I need to do, do it my way, obey the law, be a good citizen, live my life in peace. So please, I'd really, really appreciate it if you'd look into this issue, and on behalf of all the poor people that receive services from you, that we can be treated with dignity like regular citizens when we're law-abiding. Thank you very much.
Mr. Renshaw?
Mr. Renshaw? Yeah, I just want to mention, Mr. Renshaw lives in, lives in my district, and I just want to say, the way you presented yourself today really makes it even easier for us to follow up because you presented yourself with dignity, and so I appreciate how you presented this, and we'll certainly look into it.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Bennett, you have yourselves a good day, all right?
That concludes our public comment portion of the agenda. We'll go now, then, to our board comments, and Supervisor Zaragosa, would you like to go first?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to share with you that on Thursday, I attended the 46th Annual Business Outlook Conference at the Tower Club in Oxtart, and of course, you know, a couple of supervisors were there, and also Mr. Powers, and it was a pretty, pretty good conference, you know, creating balance is one of the things that they were talking about, and how the public sector and the, and also the private sector can work together, and, and it was, it was pretty well-attended, a conference, it was great to hear some of the news that, or information that they gave us. Additionally, on Sunday, I attended the fifth annual Banana Festival in Waynimi. Thousands and thousands of people were there at Waynimi for the Banana Festival, they handed out thousands of bananas, if you like bananas, I was there, and I just want to, exactly right, I just want to thank the Harbor Commissioners for an excellent Banana Festival that they had, it's the fifth annual. And additionally, I was mentioned by the fire chief today, I want to give my condolences to the family of firefighter Ossler, Ryan Ossler, and I really have a tremendous amount of respect for the firefighters, you know, they, as I mentioned before, I've had experience where they have saved some of my family members, and, and I just want to give my condolences to, to the Ossler family for the loss of, of the firefighter. And, and as Supervisor mentioned, there is a, a contribution link that you can go to and, and contribute to, to the family, and, and I did so, too, you know, just for information, and I think it's important that we support our firefighters and their families. And that's all I have, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the folks on this list. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a sad week for everybody in Ventura County government associated with the fire department, and so I appreciate Chair recognizing that loss right at the beginning of the meeting. In addition to that, sad to report that we lost Sandra Lobby. Sandra Lobby died of pancreatic cancer and really tremendous contributions that she made to, to Ventura County. And she, she wasted no time, she got here in the 1970s, and she immediately got on the Board of Directors of Ventura Music Festival, she was on the board of the Ventura County Ballet, the Rubicon Theater, she and her husband are really the, the founders of Rubicon Theater in terms of major financial support for them. She helped formalize the Grand Doms, which is Rubicon's auxiliary, and that was a real love for them. She was the president of the National Council of Jewish Women of Ventura County, she was named the Jewish Federation Women of Valor Award, she received the Mayor's Award for Ventura Music and Arts Festival Award, but all of that- But all of that doesn't really capture just the vivaciousness, the commitment she had to the arts. And I think the thing that I most admire about her and her husband is that, you know, when you think about the arts, you usually think about higher-income patrons and people with the resources to be able to do things. And they certainly had resources, but they started the community music program down on the Ventura Avenue where fourth graders going to elementary school on the avenue were given free musical instruments and would spend a year playing music and just introducing all of these kids to music, classical music. And it's just become an iconic program on the avenue. And that's Sandra stepping up and expanding beyond sort of the natural comfortable base of people that you would normally associate with the arts. So really sorry to have lost her. We lost Merle Pittman, a real mobile home advocate here. And I'd like to ask the Board to adjourn in memory of the other people on this list. I'll just very quickly point out that Penny Edison was somebody that we recognized for 25 years of service to the Long-Term Care Ombudsman last week. Happy to have been part of that program. Dave Wilson, this is a sad moment for me to point out, but Dave Wilson, a student of mine at Nordoff High School, beat me to retirement. He retired as the Assistant Chief from Ventura Police Department, able to attend his retirement celebration and stuff. And POW MIA Remembrance Day Supervisor Long was there also. And then there was a Regional Drought Summit up at Cacitas Municipal Water District highlighting, just completely full house packed, highlighting how important that issue is particularly for people in the Ojai Valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Long?
Yes, good morning, Board members, and thank you. I have a list to submit to adjourn in memory and certainly join in with the Board in condolences and prayers and thoughts for the Osler family. Truly a tragedy. And as we always talk of our county as being family, certainly the firefighters and sheriffs and all of those who are first responders are such tight-knit families. And to hear that they immediately are not surprised by it at all, that they have surrounded his wife and children to support them and will be there for the rest of their lives. So just a tragic loss, very tragic. So I'll submit that list. And I had the opportunity to go to the enrollment ceremony for our newest judge on the Superior Court bench and was very pleased to be there. Great turnout by her family. Michelle M. Castillo is her name. And the story of how she, as a young child, came up through some challenging times and how she just set education as a priority for herself and rose up through both her academic career and the goals she set for herself and never lost sight of them. And had tremendous support from her family to do that. It was just a really heartwarming, heartwarming story. And very, very wonderful to see the bench have further diversity and be embracing that diversity and to really congratulate her doing so on behalf of the Board. So was pleased I was able to be there. Also attended the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund event, and it was exciting to be there. The Housing Trust Fund has really progressed to use the funds that they have matched and certainly those that this Board has contributed to help them in matching, to do some great things in getting some real projects on the ground and to leverage the capital from the many sources they receive from both county and cities and in looking at providing low-interest loans to expand affordable workforce housing and creation of new affordable housing. They received $2 million in matching grants and completed both the full match of the $2 million and loan approvals by August of 2016, which was the deadline. So they did meet that deadline. In 2012, they were awarded $3.7 million to nine projects that would create 138 affordable homes. And in 2016, they became a certified community development financial institution under the California Organization Investment Network. And that gives them greater opportunity for leveraging funds. So our investment to them has already earned great rewards for the community for low-income housing. And they have a strong Board that will continue to move them forward. And I want to say, I thought I had their Board list on here, but I know that Chris... Oh, there it is. Marnie Brooks is the current Chair, Monocetlo Bank and Trust. And Kristy Madden, our Kristy Madden is on that Board and has been from the beginning and many others. So it really is tackling what is a significant challenge in this state for low-income housing to provide it for the workforce and those in great need. So they're doing a great job. And then I have one last other one I'd like to talk a little bit about. On October 1st, this Saturday, at 10 o'clock in Santa Paula, Santa Paula High School to be exact, there's going to be a dedication of the Roger S. Bowles Veterans Memorial Pool. Roger Bowles was a Santa Paula native, killed in action in World War II. He was a hometown boy in Santa Paula and he spoke lots and advocated before he went off to war about the need to have a swimming pool that high school students could use during the year and kids in the community in the summer. And he wanted to build it in honor of his fallen comrades from Santa Paula. Roger Bowles was killed 10 days after the last letter about the pool was written. And eventually, the pool was built in 1950 in the location Roger had suggested. The high school trustees credited him with the concept, noted that he and his fallen comrades should always be memorialized. And the leading advocate that brought to life the Roger Bowles story and testified before the Santa Paula Unified School District about dedicating the pool, the Roger S. Bowles' name was our very own Jeanette Uruguay, a county employee with our Ventura County AAA Agency. In her own time, she led the GoFundMe campaign to raise community funds to purchase the plaque. And she's been advocating for that pool for a long time. So this Saturday would be an exciting time for the community and the dedication of that pool. And that wraps up my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Long. You are good. Okay. So then I'll just give Supervisor, boy has no comments, so I'll just give a little brief. As mentioned, it was an interesting conference to go to. I think it was about the sixth Economic Outlook Conference I've been at in six months. Same people, same slides, but different audiences, I guess. Also...
I think that they brought those people from L.A. and I thought that was a very interesting, that big group down there. Very interesting information came out of that.
Good, good. Also, as Supervisor Zaragoza, I guess Supervisor Long Zaragoza, at the Housing Opportunities for People with Special Needs. And I was there and it was also so nice to see you get honored too and much more to come, but your recognition was wonderful. And I had to go because just had so much respect for Lynn Jacobs, you know? Didn't see eye to eye on the issues, but just she always was very positive in dialogue. Her heart was in her mission and politics aside, which I really appreciated.
Thank you for mentioning that, Lynn. And it was wonderful that the Trust chose to do that and also set up a fund that folks could contribute for her. Thank you. That was...
Yeah, thank you. And then also, I had the fortune of going to the Newberry Park Library's 25th Anniversary, which is nice to have out there and that it's a library with free library cards for people even in Casa Canaño. And I know that they have really expanded what they provide for the community. And it was a neat collaboration. The city also allowed space for the art gallery there, which is nice to have in that location. I remember when it was an old Ralph's, I believe, grocery store. And then I also, I don't know if we have a photo to show, but I was also at the Thousand Oaks Transit Workshop. And we had a presentation. It was for the senior citizens at the senior center there, just to make them feel more comfortable with getting on the bus and learning about bus transit. And this lady here kind of organized it. Her name's Jane. And she is showing you what happens when you want to take the bus across the county. There's that many, and she actually said there's more, but that is a, all the different pamphlets of bus schedules for the almost 10 different bus systems in our county. And they deserve and want to have a united bus system so you don't have to have that many different systems in our county. So I thought that a picture tells a thousand words. That says it. Thank you for putting it up and for my staff for getting it to you. It was also neat. I learned something at this workshop. You know, we're all on the Ventura County Transportation Commission, but I learned a good amount about what Mobility Partners provides. They will actually take you on the bus, show you the routes and take you to the destinations. I mean, they will partner with you like a friend and sit on the bus with you and show you, this is how you get to where you want to go. And then from that point on, that person has done it, they're comfortable with it, they know how to do it. And I just thought, what a great service and that's all free. If you have an ADA card or a senior card, you get free bus service in the City of Thousand Oaks, which I thought was great too. I think we're looking at the Transportation Commission providing free services for students, which I think is just a wonderful idea, really increase bus ridership, which is what we need to do. But also that it will, we have a desire to also provide low fares for seniors disabled and students if the transportation tax passes, free or low fare. But I think making it as accessible as we can, the buses will come right down to the sidewalk for you if you want. They have a ramp for you. So there's all kinds of nice amenities on the buses, grab bars and all that to make it easier. But I just think we need to do all we can and certainly by having a unified, one system in the county, that could be the best and hopefully will have that goal. That goal is not even a goal yet, but hopefully will have that, at least be the goal so we can get to it. That concludes my Board comments and opinions. And I'll go ahead and move on then to our CEO comments and Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Board members, just to echo the comments on Fire Engineer Osler, just a reminder of the dangers they face our safety workers every day in our community. I was honored to attend on your Board's behalf the Women Lawyers 10th Anniversary Dinner and very inspiring. I've been to it several times now. It's a very inspiring event, the stories. And really want to highlight our very own Assistant County Counsel Charmaine Buhner, who received the Legacy Award and just what a dynamo she is, just a great representative for attorneys and for our county. And it was a wonderful evening. And then there were, yeah, it was great. And then they also give away scholarships and two people got scholarships I just want to highlight. One of them was Sandy Murray, a woman who works in environmental health services. She's actually very close to getting her law degree. And the obstacles she's overcome in her life to get to where she is and what she wants to continue to do to advocate for people with similar hurdles is really inspiring. And then a woman, Sherry Valley, she's a volunteer in the Public Defender's Office in the Mental Health Court. And her personal story of late in her career, now volunteering because she has a son with schizophrenia. And she's volunteering there to help. And she's just finishing her law degree as well so she can get out and advocate for individuals with mental illness in their family. So just a really inspiring evening and I think a strong reflection on the quality of, and high caliber of people in our county family here. Also attended the Behavioral Health Preventing Suicide and Help and Hope Conference that they put on and introduced Susie Favor Hamilton, a three-time Olympian and mental health advocate. Just a remarkable story about really trying to get out and make sure people with mental illness don't have to suffer in silence. And it was very inspiring. So great job by Behavioral Health. Did go to the Housing Trust Fund as well. It was wonderful to see Supervisor Long get her standing ovation. The standing O. Yeah, that's right. With a birdhouse. That was a nice birdhouse, yeah. It was also a great presentation by the San Francisco Public Health Director about housing and its impact on healthcare. And he has documented study, not just a nice story or an anecdote, but documented study that shows the outcomes that improve when you house the homeless and the results from that. And so he said something that really stuck with me. Housing is medicine. It was very simple and clear and it's something we need to look at. And the trick is trying to get, you know, state and federal health categories to fund that and that's part of the challenge. And we need to continue to look at that. There's a couple of things that you can do that we are doing. FQHC certification for our clinics as well as pursuing the Whole Person Care Grant under the waiver that we are. But very powerful presentation. Kristy Madden and Tara Cruth and I attended on your Board's behalf Tim Hockett's Retirement from Community Action. What a great impact he's had on our community. And then just last Saturday, I wasn't able to attend, but again, one of our great county people at the Brain Injury Center Program, one of our own VCMC trauma nurses was recognized for his excellent service, Andy Bozek. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I like that. Housing is medicine. Do you find people also on the streets that are, you know, have medical problems too and mental health problems and you can't get them to, can't help them really as well as if you could if they were housed, had a home? Thank you. So that will go to our regular agenda items. And Supervisor Bennett has item 31, the Mobile Home Park...
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the Board to appoint Matt Winiger to the Mobile Home Park Rent Review Board for a three-year term.
We have a motion.
That's the Matt Winiger. That's right.
Thank you. And we can vote. Thank you. That passes. And item 32, again Supervisor Bennett?
And Supervisor Long.
And Supervisor Long, that's right.
Yes, thank you.
You're both on it, together.
I'll defer to my esteemed and better-looking colleague.
Okay.
I resemble that remark.
Thank you, Board members. Bringing this forward, pretty self-explanatory. The smoking tobacco ordinances are outdated, need to be updated to align with Health and All policies that this Board has made a commitment to for the good health and well-being of our residents and healthy communities as a whole. It is also a recommendation of the American Lung Association. It's been 1995 since we've had a real update to this smoking ordinance, smoking and tobacco vending ordinance. And we expect Public Health to help us to gather input from our medical center, our Santa Paula Hospital, Behavioral Health, mental health organizations like NAMI, Chambers of Commerce and educators and others to... And they've already started that just as a part of the work of Health and All policies, but to do that with a clear focus on the smoking ordinance. And the smoking ordinance has existed since 1993, apologize, does not mention e-cigarettes or vaping, which we know is a huge market that is embracing kids, unfortunately, young people. So something that needs to be looked at to include in an updated ordinance. Many local jurisdictions, including the cities of Camrio, Moore Park, Oxnard, San Buenaventure and the County of Santa Barbara have passed stronger ordinances recently. The unincorporated areas of the County of Ventura have an F grade from the American Lung Association for our overall tobacco control, smoke-free outdoor air, smoke-free housing, tobacco retailer licensing, emerging issues such as the sampling of tobacco products, sale of products. It was the tobacco vending ordinance that was last updated in 1995 and it also does not mention the e-cigarettes or the vaping. So in a new and updated ordinance, the interest would be to include banning smoking, e-cigarettes and vaping in outdoor areas and the unincorporated area of Ventura County to include dining areas, entryways, public events, recreation areas, service areas, sidewalks, work sites. Also consider similar ban for common areas of multi-unit housing and campus-wide smoking ban on all county property. If a new updated ordinance is approved, there would be several months of outreach and education before it is implemented. So working with RIGO and Salpa Salcido and our community work as we develop the Health and All policies, certainly smoking had been on the list from the beginning, to look at what we currently have in place and how things have progressed and what's needed to really strengthen this ordinance. And so the task will be to, with the Board's support, to have Public Health work with County Counsel and certainly others in the community that they may yet have need to gather information from. They've already done considerable work in looking at these other ordinances and the ordinances in the cities and counties, and to bring that back to the board for consideration. That's why we're bringing it forward.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think this is excellent, that the question that I have is, I know RIGO has an excellent program in conveying information to the Spanish-speaking community. And the question I have is that also going to be part of the ordinance where they go out and speak to the Spanish community, to also make sure that they, you know, understand the ordinance and what, you know, the e-cigarettes and so forth. So I think that maybe, I'm not sure if we do have that as part of his information to the Spanish-speaking community, but it's something that I think we should do.
Well, it certainly is, and as part of gathering information to bring this forward, but also with board's concurrence today, to go back to the community and make sure they're listening to what concerns may be, and what nuances may be necessary. And, but they do, public health does an excellent job, unless you'd like to hear directly from RIGO, he's certainly here.
No, I just want to share that, because I know RIGO has an excellent program over, especially in the colonial area, and it does an excellent job in conveying health and all policy issues and so forth, so I just wanted to share that as maybe something that RIGO, I'm sure, will do. Thank you.
Let me just say that I appreciate you bringing some of this, there's no question for some updates. I think some of those things probably go a little far to people's personal rights in some of their own areas, but there's no reason not to take a look at what we're doing here. Thanks.
Supervisor Bennett, any other words you'd like to offer?
No, I think it's truly appropriate, it's been a long time, and I think it's appropriate for us to look at this policy update.
So we have a motion? And a second? Almost, yes, we have a second. If we could all please vote.
There, I touched, we got a touchscreen.
And that motion also passes unanimously. Our next item isn't until 10 o'clock? Oh, we have a regular, another regular one, I apologize. Oh, the bendum one, yes. So let's go ahead to do item 35.
Morning Chair Parks, Board of Supervisors, CEO Mike Powers. I am D. Pupa, Deputy Director, Managed Care Patient Accounting, and I'm here this morning to present our board letter regarding TriZETO, which is our claims administrative system. First of all, we need your approval to ratify three amendments. The reason for the amendments is they're non-monetary, it's purely to meet some Department of Managed Healthcare requirements, as well as some custom code requirements. Our second recommendation is to approve an extension of our TriZETO contract that essentially saves us $741,668 for the first five years, and I'm looking at Catherine, and $1,648,967 over 10 years. And this was a tremendous partnership between our IT folks and the TriZETO executive leadership team. This was nothing that was taken lightly. We partnered with them, and it was truly a collaboration effort to incorporate such significant savings. These savings were very well needed for the plan in our current financial condition, so we really appreciated TriZETO's partnership with us. And along with that, we also can get out of the contract, so to speak, at any time, so we're not locked in for 10 years. But this is truly a collaboration, and for the healthcare plan, this gives us the ability to move forward. The other item is that we're going from leasing a system to a perpetual license, which means we own the system. And with that, I can try to answer any technical questions, I do have my IT support here.
Any questions? That's Mr. Powers, do you have a comment?
Just commenting, yeah, thank you, just a great job negotiating the deal.
I'm happy to be here to present savings, it's very exciting, and we pulled this together in a very short timeframe, so I'd like to thank Mike Pettit and his team, and the TriZETO team, and the county council team that helped us get this to fruition, so that we could execute by the end of September.
Dees, by us owning this, then are we responsible for any of the changes that we did versus if we leased it, or whatever else, is there any difference to us? Because most likely only 10 years from now, the system's not going to have much value.
Right, so the maintenance, because it's still hosted, even though we own the license, the maintenance will still be done by TriZETO, is that correct? I'm going to bring Tom up, he's, Tom Shirck is our IT manager, and he's the one that really helped us negotiate this deal.
We get all the, receive all the updates, all the maintenance, all the support, all the hardware upgrades, so the county's on the hook for nothing, going forward, we're constantly updated, say, like Microsoft Windows has its updates every so often, TriZETO updates their software every year with new features, we get all the new features.
So being in the day, do we lease it or own it, it doesn't really make that much difference, it's just the end we?
No, it's just, we own it, and if we physically want to do something with it later on, we can.
Okay.
If we wanted to host it ourselves later on, we have that ability.
That's good.
Any other questions or comments or a motion?
There's a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Okay, and now I think we'll be able to go to closed session and then come back for our 10 a.m. time certain, does that work for everyone?
Sure.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So we get a break?
We did get a closed session. Looks like we are all ready to begin our 10 a.m. time certain. I think if we delay it long enough, maybe we can keep Senator Pavly in the Senate, I don't know if that could happen, but it's, we'll go ahead and put this off for a year or two here. But this is, we are honored this morning to have Senator Pavly come and accept a resolution honoring her wonderful career, term limits is bumping her out, but we, in this county of Ventura, and in the state of California, and really in our nation and globally, we've all been positively impacted because of this fine lady's work for us. So Senator Pavly, I have a resolution with really small print, because you have done so much. And so I do want to come present this to you, and if you can join me down at the podium.
Little teeny print, oh, that is, it's like 8.5, there should be a lot.
In the legislation. This is a resolution from the Board of Supervisors honoring Senator Fran Pavly, California Senate District 27. And whereas California State Senator Fran Pavly has spent most of her lifetime in public service in Ventura and Los Angeles counties, beginning as an educator teaching middle school for 28 years, an effective advocate in favor of cityhood of Agoura Hills, and upon its incorporation in 1982 as an elected official, serving as the first mayor of Agoura Hills, and providing leadership on the city council for four terms. And whereas Senator Pavly served on the California Coastal Commission from 1995 to 2000, and was elected to the California State Assembly in 2000, where she served three terms providing outstanding leadership on climate legislation that led to the implementation of Assembly Bill 1493, the Clean Air Act in 2002, also known as the Pavly Law. That was the nation's first law to regulate greenhouse gas emissions from automobile tailpipes, and later became the basis for the new nationwide fuel efficiency standards announced by President Obama in 2011, and I remember that day, watching you on television, that requires a fleet average fuel efficiency standard of 54.5 miles per gallon by 2025 model year. And co-authored groundbreaking legislation, Assembly Bill 32, the California Global Warming Solutions Act of 2006, that established a target of reducing greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 levels by 2020. And whereas elected to the California State Senate in 2008, Senator Pavly continued her effective leadership, serving as the chair of the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee, and the Select Committee on Climate Change, and as a member of the Senate Committees, including Energy, Utilities, and Communications, Environmental Quality, Budget and Fiscal Review, Budget Subcommittee Number Two, Resources, Environmental Protection, Energy, and Transportation, Governance, and Finance, and Legislative Ethics, while also serving as a legislative participant, including last night at the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes, there we were. And whereas Senator Pavly is internationally recognized for her fight for the environment and energy, having pursued legislation that sets an overarching climate pollution reduction, most recently with Governor Brown signing into legislation, Senate Bill 32, that she authored, which builds on the success of AV32, setting the target for California to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, incentivizing alternative energy sources that will spur economic growth as California transforms into a model of sustainability for states and the nation, and other nations worldwide. And the last, almost the last whereas. Whereas Senator Pavly has also enacted rigorous safety standards for natural gas storage facilities, such as Eliso Canyon Facility in her district, that was the site of months-long disastrous leak, and successfully carried legislation to end unregulated hydraulic fracking, fracturing, fracking, and other oil extraction practices in California, and established first in the state transparency and accountability for groundwater pumping, authored the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, bringing opportunities for improved groundwater sustainability, and also co-authored successful legislation to invest $2 billion in successful air quality and clean vehicle and fuel technology programs. Whereas Senator Pavly has been a longtime advocate for the developing disabled, was instrumental in providing women with more reliable access to birth control, and worked to address local transportation priorities and other quality of life issues of California, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors will miss you terribly, and does hereby honor the distinguished career and remarkable legacy of political leadership and environmental stewardship of California State Senator Fran Pavly to the residents of California and Ventura County, and expresses their sincere gratitude for her 14 years serving as the state assembly and senate as an honorable representative of the state of California. Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
I was going to say one or two things, but then we have a resolution as well for someone else who's retiring. First of all, thank you very much, I've been representing Ventura County, I've been in office 14 years, and 12 of those 14 years have included parts of Ventura County, but every 10 years with redistricting, which part of Ventura County kept changing on me. And so I think I've overlapped and served with at least four of you on this board, but I've represented all of Oxnard, Port Juani, at some point in time. You've tried representing a district that goes from Oxnard to Fairfax in the La Brea area. I learned I can't be at one end of the district and ever drive to the other end, so I would always pick and choose Ventura County, because easier, I live in Agoura Hills. Staff went the other way. Also, I've represented and enjoyed representing Oak Park all these years, I think all 14 years. Of course, if you live in Agoura Hills, we're almost like one neighborhood, and we're collaboratively together all the time. And under Supervisor Parks' leadership, Oak Park is a wonderful neighbor for Agoura Hills and LA County, and worked with Linda also on Amundson Ranch. But in the last redistricting, that was a surprise, I lost two-thirds of my district, and instead of Santa Monica and the Palisades, Beverly Hills and those people down there, Thousand Oaks, Moore Park, Simi Valley, Santa Rosa Valley, you know, Oak Park, Wood Sherwood area, Santa Clarita, Stevenson Ranch, Porter Ranch, all a big change in so many ways, but I've come to the conclusion that it's all about the same, same quality of life issues, whether you're in local government or state government, people want safe communities, want a public education system that works for their, not only their own children, but for generations to come. They really value our community colleges and CSUs. I've been, I'm next door to North Ridge and Cal State Channel Islands, so I monitor them all the time. And they care about quality of life and open space issues. I was telling Linda last night, every single of the 10 cities in my Senate district have a member on the advisory committee for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, or on the board like Linda is. And so open space, quality of life protections, all resonate regardless of party in this very fascinating district, livable communities, safe communities, and good people. Now, the real reason I like Ventura County, and well, there's many reasons, not only is in my backyard, you can grapple with issues, you know, you can pick up the phone and talk to the sheriff. I carried a bill for Greg Totten, District Attorney, you know all the players, try LA County, 12 million people, right? I think it takes me two days to get to the Sheriff Department in Monterey Park, so it's just more challenging, and this is manageable government here, and I think all of you collectively are doing, doing amazing job, and I've had the good fortune of getting to know Ventura County even better. I did teach for 25 years at Chaparral Middle School in Moore Park, so I've been around all these 40 years as a neighbor, and it's been just an honor and privilege representing all of you up in Sacramento at one time or other. So I look forward to collaborating. Kathy and I are going to go out and have some fun in a few months, right Kathy, right? Dinner or whatever, and it's been a pleasure. So thank you very much for this recognition. I would like to recognize Marie Lakin, because what I've done in my district office is sort of assigned, if you will, I'm a teacher, so I make assignments. She's in charge of keeping Ventura County happy, and she's done an amazing job on my behalf. There's Marie there, who's filling in as the photographer. I think she knows every chamber group, rotary group, every civic group, attends everything and loves it, so that's great. And she's from Ventura, your district Steve, so you're reflected in this discussion. But may I take the time to honor Kathy Long for just a moment?
Could we, I'd like to say first a few comments, Senator, for your leadership. No, no, put that down. Put that down.
Let's see, do I outrank you, could I tell you?
This is my board. You're my house. I just, you have been such a wonderful role model, leader, example for what it means as a, as a public policy leader to roll your sleeves up and do some heavy lifting work, and to really work policy to get as much agreement as possible, to move forward such significant legislation that you have carried, authored, championed. And coming as a teacher, I'm sure there's reward for you to think about the children today in our schools, understanding what it means to have clean air, and how they can help contribute, and what their role is in the environment and the climate. And to be able to do that, setting California on the map, but setting internationally the legislation that you have authored and championed, and just been so fierce advocate for, is a remarkable, remarkable career. Remarkable, I'm sure for you, rewarding to be able to look back on all of that and know that it will hold the test of time, will have those young children growing up in a different world, and appreciation of the world we live in, and how we must be protectors and advocates, and really honor our earth. And you brought that to the forefront, and I just wanted to thank you so much for that.
Thank you very much Kathy. I think the one bill that Linda mentioned that had the most impact, hopefully positive, but it's challenging, was this Groundwater Sustainability Management Act, you know, the first time in the state's history that the first time in the state's history that groundwater has been managed or regulated. There were, there's a hundred and twenty-five of our five hundred and fifteen basins that are severely overdrafted. Ventura County, though, is complying not only with the spirit of the act, they were moving that direction anyway. They know you can't manage what you don't measure, so now, I know Steve attends those hearings, I read all my Ventura County Star articles, I keep up, but you have to measure who takes out how much water in a fair way, so that one driller doesn't get the access to more than their fair share of water. But Ventura County has a lot at stake when it comes to having to manage your groundwater. There's going to be less snowpack in the future in California, and you're not going to be able to rely, even in parts of the eastern part of Ventura County, as much as importing water. You're going to have to manage your groundwater, everyone is, this is, but you have even more at stake, the Central Coast does, and that's because if you don't, saltwater intrusion and your economy, your agricultural economy is tied into it, as well as every other parts of the economy. So, a lot of my love for environmental bills either link to public health, but they also link to the economy. And so if you ever get a chance, any of you know someone who wants to be in the California Legislature, it's an amazing experience, because since one out of every eight people in the U.S. live in California, what you do here matters, and it becomes either a de facto or eventual national policy, whether you're regulating energy efficient requirements for refrigerators, that becomes a national standard. So it's a fascinating place to be, and as I like to remind people, as a former civics teacher, there's eighty, thirty-eight million people in California, close to thirty-nine million now, that's more than all of Canada, it's more than all of Australia. And so other countries who visit California, Sacramento regularly, almost every week, they view us as really a nation-state, and so our policies are looked at, not only in other states, but in other countries. And that was something I hadn't appreciated, sitting in my classroom in Moore Park not that long ago.
Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, but may I?
Supervisor Zeragoza.
Before you, I know you want to give the presentation away, you know, to somebody here.
Because I'm not coming back, Kathy.
Senator, I, I just want to thank you, I know the resolution that our chair read, you know, it shares exactly the good work that you've done, and, and, and again, I just want to personally thank you for the good work, the excellent environmental work you've done for the state of California and the, and the county of Ventura. And I just want to thank you so much for your excellent work, and what are you going to do now after retirement?
I'll let you know around January, I'm going to ponder that.
But I just want to thank you for the good work, and Marie Lakin's did a good job for you here in Ventura County. I want to share one thing, you know, that my daughter-in-law over at Moore Park says you were one of the best teachers she's ever had, so I just want to share that with you.
Thank you very much, because when I go to Moore Park, they don't ever say Senator Pavly, it's Mrs. Pavly.
Mrs. Pavly.
Because I, I don't know what's with students these days, former students are in their thirties or so, they're either still living at home, or they bought a home in the area, because they love Ventura County and their Moore Park, because I run into former students, if you teach long enough. And meeting all their children, which-
Excellent teacher, is what she said, you know?
Yeah, thank you.
And you've done it not only in, in the Senate for the state, and also for the school districts, but thank you again for your excellent work.
I should share with you a secret to Ventura County that really is relevant as an eighth-grade teacher. Your Ventura County Courthouse has a program for eighth graders, because that's what we teach, Constitution and branches of government, where you can bring thirty students, up to thirty students for a day at the Ventura County Courthouse. You do a mock trial, you go into a regular trial, your judge steps down, spends time with the students, explaining it. We go to the jury room to see how that's drawn. So children going up know about their rights and responsibilities as citizens, and they come away, and we go through the prison to, or the jail, so it's a really instructive-
My grandson attends about Ventura, they have that too, they participated here at the court system, you know, excellent.
So I've, I've been in this complex a lot over, over the years, so it's a wonderful program, very unique to Ventura County.
Thank you for the work.
Senator Pavly?
Yes.
Sorry to delay you. I'm, I'm going to be, be very brief, I just want to point out that over and over again, just like as you point out, the groundwater sustainability agencies that we now have in, in California, you've consistently found and looked at our toughest problems, and then you assessed the powerful political interests that block solutions to those problems. And then you did the hardest thing in government, which is you crafted a solution that could beat back those powerful interests and still be good policy. And you get attacked from both sides when you do that.
That, that's true. I got a C from the Sierra Club a few years ago, I don't know.
You get, you get attacked from both sides, but what people don't recognize is literally we would not have anything in terms of regulation of groundwater if you hadn't done that, you know? With each one of these things, it, it took somebody with your courage to both take on those powerful interests that demonize you, and also craft legislation that could actually get passed. And I just want to say those three things, find a problem, assess the political problem, and then craft the right solution, is, that's your enduring legacy, and it's an inspiration to everybody else going forward to say, that's how you really need to govern if you want to do good government. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve, for that observation, because that's actually the hard work that goes on behind the scenes, right? And Ventura County also is, has the challenge of looking at underground injection wells and relating to oil and gas and protecting your groundwater basins, and that work still goes on. So your county oversight on what the state is doing is incredibly, incredibly important, and so those issues are still relevant, and, because the last thing we need to do is contaminate our groundwater basins through probably careless, our disregard for making sure we have all the best management practices in place if we're going to balance oil and natural gas production along with our, our sustainable groundwater supply. So good luck to you in the future, let me know how I can help behind the scenes.
Thank you for that leadership.
I just, I also just want to chime in to that, things like the Groundwater Sustainability Management Act, I attended a hearing that you led with these water experts and lawyers, and the water law is some of the most complicated stuff I've ever seen, and, and I just say that in sense that how intelligent you are to be able to be grasping this, and it takes someone with that intelligence to be able to pull something like Supervisor Bennett was saying, and also your ability for collaboration, which I think is just exceptional, that you can get a bill like you just did, get signed by the governor. So I just wanted to mention that. Also, I know that you can't help yourself but to thank others for everything that you work with, it seems, and I know that even today, where we're spending this time to thank you, you need to also make sure and recognize others, so I just wanted to point that out. And just obviously, you have also been a mentor of mine, I couldn't think of a better one. And I remember back in the day when I was mayor of Thousand Oaks, and I think you were mayor of Agur, and we were the ones with the ponytails, and people would confuse us, and so it was-
Linda was always the younger version of Fran Pavly.
It was, and remains-
For a while, they confused us.
Remains an honor, so I'll turn it back over to you.
More fit version, I'll put it that way. Anyway, thank, thank you very much. And Almondson Ranch and everything else we worked on together, Linda. So Kathy, could I have you come on down here, just, this is, will be painless. I'm going to come over to your house, find the best place to put this up, so. Where are we putting all these things in a few months, Kathy?
We were going to frame yours real big, but decided you needed a, a place to put it, and that would be hard with all the plaques that you no doubt have.
Well, I'm just going to say a couple of words, because you're going to have this honoring Kathy celebration going on in the next few months, and we're going to be doing an amazing, I guess it's panel discussion with the Ventura County Star, Lois Capps, Kathy Long, and myself, the three retiring ladies, I think, coming up in, I don't know, October, November?
December.
Yeah, something like that. So that may be enjoyable, we can say a lot of things, but Kathy's been in, on your Board of Supervisors for twenty years, representing the third district, and I was just thinking about the variety of differences between some of the communities you represent. It's sort of a microcosm for the state, right? You have Camarillo, or Santa Paula, or Port Wainimi, right? Navy bases, or the Ormond Beach Wetlands, and the Port of Wainimi, really complex different issues. But what I think about Kathy is, always it seemed like when there was the difficult challenges, particularly during the budget problems, her, her putting the county first as far as on the road to fiscal stability, it's so easy to maybe want to do a little more, who doesn't, right? But you've done a great job on the budget, creating livable communities, whether your passion is for open space or housing, doing a fantastic job, your advocacy for Cal State Channel Islands, you've been there the whole time, they've opened the doors, I've lost track, but at least twelve years ago or something, and before that, just the planning and the location of it, that's, that's been amazing as well. She's done a marvelous job, you might not see her in Sacramento, I do, on CSAC, representing Ventura County on the County Association Agencies, and on the Executive Board there, so I oftentimes will see her at Burbank Airport at some horrible hour in the morning, right? Coming up, coming up to Sacramento. I'd read a little about and hadn't realized, because Santa Paula's not in my district, your good work you did with the Santa Paula Community Hospital and the reopening, really important as far as providing accessible, cost-effective healthcare, especially to communities like Santa Paula. And the list goes on and on, you have so many, some of her mentioned here, civic organizations that you've been a member of, first five in the list, you've made a real difference in the community, so whether it's me in Sacramento, or certainly Supervisor Long in, in Ventura County, you can feel very proud that your twenty years here, you've made a real positive difference on behalf of so many people who live and work in Ventura County, and you were right there when the, I forget what it was called, sequestration, or when the Navy bases were being threatened with closure. Kathy will step up into a fight and not let it go. I've experienced attending many events in Ventura County with Kathy, she comes prepared for thoughtful speeches, thoughtful commentary, that you do an amazing job, and I did try to talk her into at least two or three times to running for state office. She sort of said in polite terms, no way. She's smarter than I am, right? So on behalf of the State Senate, we have a resolution where all the whereases, you can read at home at your leisure.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Very special to have received this from you.
Thanks. And we'll see you at the forum and other things.
We also have a public comment speaker, Carla Castillo, if you'd like to come up.
Hello, how are you? Good. You too. Sorry for jumping in, hello there. I just wanted to take the opportunity, Senator Pavly was actually my Assembly Representative for her two terms in the Assembly, and it's an absolute honor to be here amongst these great, amazing women who have trailblazed legislation and policy that have impacted our quality of life here every single day. So thank you not only for thinking about our todays, but also our tomorrows and the generations to follow, because each of you have led this incredible legacy of work that impacts not only what happens here in Ventura County, but statewide. So I'm absolutely humbled and honored, and thank you for the inspiration that you provide so many of us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next time certain, and this is item twenty-three, and this is one that Supervisor Long will be bringing forward. It's a resolution proclaiming October twenty sixteen as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Supervisor Long in her pink jacket.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you again, Senator Pavly, very honored to have you here. Okay, Board Members, it is my pleasure and opportunity to introduce this resolution proclaiming October twenty sixteen as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I, I know I, I have some speakers here, I'd like to read the highlights of the resolution first, and then we'll have, invite the speakers up. And this is marking the thirty-third year that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women and men about prevention, early breast cancer detection, diagnosis, and treatment. This impacts the lives of many Americans either directly or through the diagnosis of a family member or a friend. There have been considerable progress in diagnosing this disease and improving treatments, yet eliminating breast cancer continues to be a major goal. While overall death rates are declining, breast cancer remains the second leading cause of cancer, excuse me, cancer deaths among women. This year, more than twenty-five thousand women and men in California, and six hundred and forty, I have to have a drink here evidently, six hundred and forty-three reside in Ventura County will develop breast cancer. Clinical breast exams and mammograms are the most effective way to detect breast cancer at an early stage. The American Cancer Society, the National Cancer Institute, and the United States Preventive Services Task Force agree that regular mammograms can greatly reduce the risk of dying from breast cancer. October nineteenth is the National Mammography Day, and that's when women should put on their calendar on a regular basis to get mammogram appointments, mammography appointments. Men and women take additional steps to reduce their risk of breast cancer by not smoking, we carried an ordinance forward today, request to update our ordinance, maintaining a healthy weight, eating a well-balanced diet, engaging in moderate or vigorous physical activity every day, with vigorous activity three days a week, and limiting alcohol consumption. Those are the things that, yeah, I know, those are the things that are good for preventive. Just a little wine. It's important for all Americans to raise awareness of breast cancer by talking with family members and friends about the importance of prevention screening and early detection, and by educating ourselves and our families to improve our ability to prevent, detect, treat, and ultimately cure. And there is an ultimately cure goal for all of us. So, I'm be, proclaiming October twenty sixteen as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and joining with the American Cancer Society to encourage all women and men to learn more about the disease, be proactive in early detection practices, and participate in building awareness all year long, certainly not just one month of the year, and to celebrate birthdays as we all must and do. So I'm very honored to be able to present this and to invite, and, and also encourage citizens to attend the American Cancer Society Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk on October eighth at Harbor Cove Beach, which I am always excited to be able to go and enjoy that walk. It's a lovely walk, it's a great place to, to hold this event. So again, that's on October eighth in the morning. And now I would like to invite up to speak to this resolution, Hadi Lashkari, who's the Chair of the American Cancer Society Western Community Leadership Council, Pam Brady, the Senior Market Manager, Community Engagement for the California Division of the American Cancer Society, Payalina Bartolucci, who's the Manager of Making Strides Against Breast Cancer, and Irene Tamayo, who's the Program Manager, Mission Delivery for ACS. And I will step down to present this resolution, ask you to say a few words, Hadi, and, and I'll come down to do that now. Please.
Well, good, good morning, Honorable Supervisors and Friends, thank you for, for having us. On behalf of the Volunteer Western Ventura Community Leadership Council, we want to thank you for taking this opportunity- thank you for taking this opportunity to recognize October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, as well as the generosity of Brighton Management and the seven local hotels that have really stepped up to provide complimentary rooms for out-of-county individuals that are coming in to get treatment in one of our fine hospitals within the, you know, one of our many fine hospitals here within the county getting cancer treatment. Unfortunately, cancer is the second-leading cause of death in California. One in four deaths in California are due to cancer. It's estimated that 59,000, over 59,000 Californians will die of cancer in 2016, and another 173,000 Californians will be diagnosed with cancer. I have our latest American Cancer Society California facts and figures. We passed that out. It has information that's, you know, kind of throughout the state, as well as local cancer information, that's always useful to look at. There's a reason to be hopeful for more than 1,400,000 Californians are alive today after being diagnosed with cancer. The American Cancer Society is second only to the federal government in their investment in cancer research. And I think when we think of the American Cancer Society and the fundraising that's done for prevention and treatment of cancer, that's certainly a large part of what the American Cancer Society does. But as a member of the community council, it's also important to note that if you've ever attended one of our events, and I know many of you have, education, advocacy, awareness play a major role, because we believe that early detection leads to better treatment options, and ultimately, better outcomes and more birthdays, as Supervisor Long also As the largest volunteer health organization in the nation, with thousands of volunteers who've joined the fight against cancer with the American Cancer Society, someday cancer will be history. We believe that. We're working ourselves out of a job, is essentially what we're trying to do. And on a personal note, I'd like to thank each and every one of you, because I know as I've attended many of the American Cancer Society events, I see many of you there supporting each of the Relay for Life events, as well as the gala, and personally wanting to invite each and every one of you to attend on Sunday, October 8th, at the Harbor Cove Beach for the 5K Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk to raise awareness for breast cancer. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, and where would one be able to sign up for that walk?
Makingstrideswalk.org/ventura. And it's Saturday, October 8th.
Yes, the ticket. And you can join a team, build a team, show up and just walk? It's all open to great big crowds, and it's a fun event. And as you were speaking, I looked around the room, and not for people to raise hands, but I know there are at least five people in this room who've had breast cancer. That's how prevalent it still is. And we're here, I'm here, since 2001 because of research that was done decades ago, prevention, knowledge, education, outreach. So, proud to be here with you. I have this resolution, and I have another part of this that I'm going to present, but first I'd like to present the resolution to ACS in appreciation for their great work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. (Applause).
Thank you so much. Very appreciative.
And I'll say too, I'm very proud that our county healthcare agency, healthcare system, is very engaged with the work to really reach out with our mobile mammography unit and other ways to really make a difference in reaching both men and women in cancer prevention and education and treatment. And now it is, came to my attention as working on this, that there's a partnership between the American Cancer Society and our local hotels. And that partnership provides complimentary rooms for visiting patients while receiving treatment. This applies to all cancer patients, not just breast cancer. In the spirit of raising awareness in the fight against breast cancer, I thought it appropriate to take a moment to celebrate these great efforts by the seven hotels in Ventura County, who have stepped up to make a difference in the lives of cancer patients and their families. And I'd like to present certificates, and I'd invite Victor Dollar to come up to share with us more about this unique local partnership. And then we'll present certificates to those who are present in appreciation for this partnership. Mr. Dollar.
Good morning, honorable supervisors, and it's with my pleasure to make this partnership. And I have to, I have to thank Rebecca Evans for bringing Pam Brady to our Ventura County Lodging Association meeting a few months back, when she had requested, I still remember she asked if she could just get three hotels. And again, I'll go to our ownership, Joseph Fan, when I called him and said, you know, I wanted to commit all seven hotels in Ventura County, which he said, you know, I think this is a great thing, and let's go for it. So with that, and then the general managers, there's a couple that are here that actually went along, not only went along with the program, but have been involved with some of their, one of them in particular himself, and some family members have had the tragedy of dealing with cancer. So I thank them for their cooperation, and it is a pleasure to make this partnership with the Cancer Society.
Thank you, Mr. Dollar. Please stay up here. So we have Victor Dollar, Senior Vice President of Brighton Management Sales, and Rebecca Evans, Executive Director of the Ventura County Lodging Association, and Shannon Hiligus, General Manager, Marriott Ventura Beach.
And David Drer.
And David Drer. So if you would please come forward, those folks. This is a certificate for Brighton Management.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ventura Beach, Marriott. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is outstanding partnership to step forward and do that. Residence Inn Marriott Knoxler.
Hi, Kathy.
Thank you. Uh, Sheraton Four Points?
I don't think we've had the rest there.
No? Okay, nope. Well, I'll name them, so you know who they are, though. Hampton and Channel Islands. Yay. Holiday Inn Express, Port Wineme was just there the other day. Courtyard Marriott. And Holiday Inn Express Ventura Harbor. And Sheraton Four Points Ventura Harbor. I'll give those, Rebecca?
Thank you.
Would you like to?
Thanks.
Get them to, thank you so much for making, helping to make this happen. And all of you. Thank you.
And let's take a photo out here.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, sure. Yeah. Let's do a big group here. First.
Yes.
Come on.
Here we take it.
Thank you so much.
What a great service to provide. Thank you, and thanks for bringing it to our attention, Supervisor Long. We'll now go then to our 10:30 time certens. The first is a receive and file on market values with our Treasurer-Tax Collector, Judge Hints.
Madam Chair, honorable members of the Board, Mr. Powers, I am Stephen Hints, Ventura County's Treasurer-Tax Collector. I have the honor today of reporting to you the report of investments for the months ending July 31st and August 31st. The news is that there is very little to report that's different from the other reports. The big news is contained in bold print at the bottom of the first page. Standard &amp; Poor's affirmed its rating of the county's investment pool as AAAS1+, again, and still the highest rating awarded to any municipal investment pool. The yield reported for this period is 88 basis points, eight tenths, almost nine tenths of a percent. Going forward, the pool is invested today in instruments which would yield 1.08% held maturity. The inter-month yield, mid-month yield, let's say, was 0.90. So we are seeing a slight, but perceptible, rise in interest rates and accordingly in yield. The size of the pool drops historically. August is a month of withdrawals. We will break even in September, and then the pool will start getting larger again in October. The Federal Open Market Committee met last week and did not increase the basic interest rate, holding it at .25, 25 basis points. The betting, to the extent that the big thinkers bet, is that there will not be an interest rate increase before December, and it is less than 48% likely that they will raise them at all. Even then, there are multiple factors resulting in that. Very unsettled situation in Europe, especially with Germany's largest bank, a very slow, if not stagnant, United States economy, a terrible statistical month in August, that where every measure that the Federal Open Market Committee relies on was negative. So I do not actually expect a rate increase in December either. But the situation is that we're able to buy good investments as they come up, and we will continue to be able to do so in greater volume as the payments start coming in in October. And I look forward to an even more favorable report the next time I see you. I am here, of course, to respond to any questions you may have. This is a receive and file matter.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on this exciting report? Not seeing any?
The best is yet to come. The next item is, will be much more interesting.
Okay, look forward to that one. If we can have a motion in a second, please vote. And now, what we've all been waiting for.
The next item will be presented by Ventura County's Most Excellent Assistant Treasurer-Tax Collector, Mrs. Linda Catherine Lee.
Good morning. Chair Parks, Honorable Board Members, CEO Powers. For the record, my name is Linda Catherine Lee, the Assistant Treasurer-Tax Collector. The item before your board is a routine item requesting you to accept the notice of intention to sell tax-defunct properties, adopt and approve the resolutions. Additionally, it is my pleasure to report back to your board of the measures the office has implemented to further promote transparency. The power of mapping through geographic information system, also known as GIS, allows all of us to visualize, analyze, and interpret data to understand relationships, patterns, and trends. The office leverages this powerful tool by partnering with the County Information Technology Services, GIS Division, to further enhance the transparency through the strategic value of GIS. The office created two kinds of maps. First, the static maps, as included in your packet, Exhibit 7. Categorize the parcels in West and East Counties' boundaries. Second, the aerial GIS map is constructed with overlaying visualizations in order for the users to make informed decisions of interested properties or parcels. To help me demonstrate the effectiveness of this powerful aerial map, it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Leanne Phillips, GIS Program Analyst, Dr. Carlos Videman, GIS Manager, and Ms. Kim Porter, Deputy Chief Information Officer. Through our business partnership, the GIS team constructed the county's first mobile application for GIS services. The application is mobile-friendly to all devices, such as tablets and smartphones. The interactive aerial map has built-in tools of symbols, legend, and navigation. The user can view at a glance at all property locations depicted here in the awkward dots. With a simple click of the Auction Parcels tool, a list of active properties is displayed. The user can use this tool to navigate, or simply by zooming in, zooming out, the user can click on an interested parcel to view additional information about the property, such as the minimum required bids. The user can print different-sized maps in PDF. Personally, I like having a hard copy. I can make notes of my research and bring the notes to the auction. This print feature allows a greater flexibility for the user.
In addition to what is available upon locking the application, the user has the ability to customize.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone? Thank you.
The user has the ability to customize their map. There are additional layers available to turn on, such as cities, for a point of reference, as well as aerial overlays. The aerial overlays show these streets near the property, as well as the adjoining parcels In addition to having different layers to be able to turn on and off, the user can choose a different base map. By default, the aerial image with labels appears. By selecting the Base Maps tool, they can click on a streets map, somewhat like a Google background, or a topographic map. With these choices, the users can make informed real estate property selection decisions. On the menu bar, the Auction Homepage will also take the user directly to the Treasurer-Tax Collector's auction webpage. At this site, the user will access frequently asked questions, official terms and condition of the sale, as well as registration information. And finally, a Help button, which will take the user to what I term as the IKEA two-page instruction to decipher the GIS references as a guide to customize the aerial map. This interactive aerial map will be updated daily as properties are being redeemed. As stated before, the GIS mobile-friendly application is a first for our county. So for a quick demonstration, we will also switch over to an iPad mobile service.
So this is really just to show you that the mobile application looks identical to the laptop. So if they're out viewing the property on their iPhone or iPad, they'll get the same experience if they're on a desktop. So we... So we just wanted to quickly show you. You can zoom in, zoom out, click the, you know, the parcels, all the zooms, the base maps that Leanne described, they're all available in this app as well.
So how do I get this app?
So this demonstration is to highlight the easy convenience for the users, business owners, or any constituents who are relying on smartphones and tablet devices to obtain within reach critical and important information. And to answer your question Supervisor Parks, once your board approves the resolutions, this link will be activated on the Treasure Tax Collector's webpage. In closing, the business partnership of tax collection and GIS mapping will be presented as a best practice in upcoming statewide conferences to demonstrate the strategic value of GIS. The final product provides a visual framework for conceptualizing, understanding, and prescribing action. In this business partnership, the benefit is ultimately for the constituent who wishes to participate in the auction for the purpose of real estate, business decision, or property selection. The aerial dynamic map enhances the user's flexibility to customize in order to make informed decision. Finally, we wish to express our sincere appreciation to CIO Pettit, Ms. Porter, Dr. Videman, and Ms. Phillips for translating our vision into a reality. We further wish to thank our talented staff for their dedication and commitment to implement this vision. Mrs. Karen Carr, Division Manager, Mrs. Tara Tosato, Division Manager, Ms. Lorraine Bundt, Tax Collection Supervisors, and Mr. Anthony Jones, our Auction Subject Matter Expert. This concludes my comment and all available for questions. Thank you.
It's delightful to see this. I had to ask that we do this back in the day when we found out that some property that the county could have purchased that had a flood control maintenance road right on it. We didn't know about it and it ended up getting purchased by a private party. So now we have to like lease it from them. So it just seems that it's a really good idea to be able, not only for the citizens who may want to buy one of these at auction, but also for government. And the City of Thousand Oaks is always looking at, in the skyline area it's called, looking at properties that go to tax default so that it can purchase open space. But this is also good. I hope that the agencies out there will also be looking at it, our watershed protection district including that too. But this is a great resource. I definitely will support the motion. I want to go on and take a look at it. I was trying to find it online, but not until after the vote. But it might also, excuse me, might be a good idea if possible to have that be one of the options when people go to county map view, that they can also go to this item that is linked through there so they don't have to go to the assessors page, though it's a great idea to do that, but also that they could do it through the, our tax collector. Also a good idea to do it through the county view map too if it isn't already. Comments from the board?
It's a great tool and I know lots of collaborative work to make it, the vision become reality, so. Excellent, thanks.
Yeah. Every time we do these kinds of things, we chink away at that public mistrust of government because you're really demonstrating government's working to help people and stuff. So thank you very much for this.
And I also want to thank you. We can, I know as mentioned, we can put it on the county website, maybe on our individual district websites, we can also put that, you know, have a leg to it, so. Thank you for an excellent presentation.
And I would also look to policies that we have. I don't know if they're written or not, but regarding the ability to access the property owner's name, sometimes some agencies don't allow that and it looks like your agency may allow that. So I would just see that we be consistent across the board. All right, we have a motion. I'm so delighted to see this come forward. It exceeds the expectations that I had when I had asked that we look at mapping these. Thank you.
Quick question. Linda Kim, congratulations. It looks really user friendly and great resolution. It's so clear. You zoomed in there a lot. Could it go farther than that or is that as far as it goes?
You can go closer.
You can go closer? Wow, really get a look at the, at the property and condition and that kind of thing? That's amazing. Thank you.
So with that, we have the opportunity to make a motion?
We did.
In a second? And we voted?
Yeah.
Well, that's great. How long until I get to go look at that app? When can I get it? All right. Thank you so much. Great job, all involved there. And you are right Judge, that was a lot more exciting.
There's one thing I want to clarify.
Yes.
You'll access the Treasure Tax Collector.
I said assessor, I meant Treasure Tax Collector. Big difference.
Where are you at?
Thank you. You can access it through the Treasure Tax Collector's office. Item 26, this is a hearing on the ordinance pertaining to expedited permitting of electric vehicle charging stations, another big positive. Good morning.
Good morning Chair Parks, Mr. Powers, members of the board. This may not be as exciting as the last item, but I'll do my best. My name is Dave Hanson. I'm a district manager here at the County of Ventura. I'm in the Building and Safety Division. The item before you today is the second reading and hopefully the adoption of an ordinance for an expedited streamlined permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations. As you might recall from my previous visit a couple of weeks ago, Assembly Bill 1236 requires that all local jurisdictions adopt by ordinance a ministerial expedited permitting process for these types of systems. The bill is part of the Governor's Office of Planning and Research goal to have 1.5 million zero emission vehicles on the California roadways by the year 2025. As part of our regular course of business, these processes are essentially in place now for residential applications with the issuance of most electrical, electric vehicle charging stations issued over the counter. In addition, the review and permit issuance of non-residential installations will be made part of this expedited permitting process. Building and Safety is developing guide sheets and web-based information as required by this bill and will be, I'm sorry, and will have it available on our website in the very near future. Additionally, we will be working to include this as part of our online services through Exela Citizen Access. We appreciate your time and consideration related to the adoption of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions, comments, motion? All right.
And appreciate, we need to keep moving down the court on this whole electric charging. Thank you. Thank you.
It's been exciting to see the news that they're putting a hydrogen charging station in Thousand Oaks, so it opens up the option of buying other types of clean energy vehicles. Okay, and that passes and we can now go on to Agenda Item 27. This is our first 11:00 AM time certain with our fire chief back again on a, thank you. And this is a grant award, right?
Yes. Good morning Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers for the record, Mark Lorenzen, County Fire Chief. So all too often, we secretly hope that our items make it to the consent agenda and we don't have to get up and speak, but every once in a while, we actually like to pull an item out and highlight something that is kind of amazing that we'd actually like to bring to the board. And this one isn't just about the grant, but really it's about collaboration. Last week on Tuesday, we went live with our regional dispatching with Oxnard Fire Department and it actually demonstrated and showed good government and the efficiencies that we recognize in the collaboration and partnership. So really what I'm here today to do is also recognize that collaboration and partnership. What we are asking the board today is to approve the acceptance of a grant, but the, really one of the primary reasons we have this grant today is standing next to me and it's the Oxnard Fire Department and specifically Battalion Chief Alex Hamilton who has been instrumental in the success of our grants over the last couple of years. I will say Alex's collaboration with us over the last four years has resulted in over $4 million in grant funding specifically for the Ventura County Fire Department. We saw the SCBA grant that you guys approved last year for about $2.2 million. I know we had a traffic safety grant that basically made all of our vehicle extrication equipment similar throughout the entire county. That was a little over $500,000, so. And now before you today is a $1.2 million grant. So with that, I'd just like to briefly introduce Alex, have him say a few words and then allow for some questions. With that, it's Alex Hamilton.
Hi, good morning Chair Parks and Board Members. Thank you. This is just another step in a, in a collaboration, I guess, that we've been working slowly but in unison to working more closely together. And so this, this grant is another step in that direction and we will actually also benefit from Ventura County Fire Department getting this grant, which is one of the things that we've been, with our grants countywide, is trying to get, get the best training and the best equipment for our personnel so they can do, do some good work out in the community. So thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Great. With that, I would be happy to entertain any questions or.
Madam Chair, Chief, I want to thank also Oxnard for the dispatch partnership with Oxnard. I think that's really going to help us all tremendously and I know that the dispatch office and Oxnard needed some help and assistance and certifications and, and other items that we needed to, for the emergency management. But I want to thank again Oxnard and you Chief for the excellent work, you know, that you're doing for the community. Thank you.
Just to say thank you for working together going after this and this in addition to the excellent outreach and for CPR, sidewalk CPR training, we have, we'll have a great community. Folks can feel like they have the responses they need, so life-threatening situations. Thank you.
That's a significant 45 cardiac defibrillators. That's great to be able to see. Thank you for the good work on this.
Thank you. Yes, I did forget to mention that we are getting 45 new defibrillators out of this. I was talking about the collaboration and partnership, which is great and the reality is FEMA really looks to agencies and counties to look for regional benefits and partnership on these grants and they, that actually brings up the approval percentage much higher than just individual departments going for itself.
I know, I know at one time we were distributing some of those defibrillators in public buildings. Is that what these will be used for or are they for the units?
These are replacements for the 10-year-old ones that we carry on our engines and our paramedic squads. Not, these are not the normal ones that we see like over here.
Right.
The smaller ones.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Great. Thanks guys. I think the public likes to see this cooperation, so it's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if everyone has voted, we will be able to move to the next item, which will be Item 28. And this is a hearing on a water pipeline franchise, Old Creek Road.
Good morning Chair Parks, members of the board, CEO Powers, Keith Philagard, Public Works, Real Estate Services. This is a public hearing to grant a franchise to Old Creek Water Company. We were working on another project in the area and discovered that there was a water pipeline within the road right of way. It has apparently been there for 45 years. The owner of the water company had received verbal permission to place the pipeline next to the roadway. The owner of the water company believed that it was outside the public road right of way and therefore didn't need permission from the county. This water company is and has been registered with the state of California. They are inspected by the County Environmental Health Division. Once they determined, or was it determined that they were in the public road right of way, they cooperated, they provided as-built drawings for their facility, they've agreed to all the franchise terms and request that the board grant that. Take any public speakers?
Supervisor Bennett, yes.
Shut their water off. They.
Well, dude, it costs a third of their whole revenues just to pay the fee.
After 45 years, yeah. Unfortunate it got to this situation, but I'd like to move the recommended action.
And this grants a water pipeline franchise. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to take this opportunity to point out that this is a unique area. It's a, it's a small area and people are kind of isolated there and it's one, I know Supervisor Floyd, but we've also got the issue of the, the Boy Scouts are trying to get some access through there. We have some property owners and I just want to appeal to everybody that lives there that the best thing is for everybody to try to cooperate with everybody and make, make life work for everybody, just like this. I mean, at the, at the water pipeline, I mean, county's not, just want to make it work and the same thing ought to happen. People ought to try to find a way to make it work for the Boy Scouts to be able to access that property, find a way for, for everybody to be able to do that. We're not talking about massive new things. We're talking about trying to, to have the people that are there be able to, to do the things that they currently are doing. Thanks.
That's a good point. The Boy Scouts, where they're doing that, using that property for a long time before now, it's tough. Yeah.
All right, and with that, we had the vote, we had the approval and you're.
Thank you.
Good to go, good to see. All right, then we'll go to our next agenda item, which we can't quite do yet because it's not 11:30 yet. So we will have a break while the music plays. 27th Board of Supervisors meeting to our 11:30 time certain and then I will open up the public hearing and this is regarding some outside building envelopes on Lot 11 and 12 in the Santa Rosa Valley. And we have a staff report on this.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, the, the only person in attendance currently, I believe, is, is the applicant himself who is proposing this. We could go through, we have a PowerPoint presentation, we could go through that or we can merely explain to you very briefly what this project involves since it's a very simple case.
If, that would be fine if you just want to give us a brief presentation.
Well, then I'll, I'll go ahead and proceed if, if it's okay with my colleagues here.
Thank you.
Anyway, the project involves minor changes in the building envelopes on two lots in the Santa Rosa Highlands tract. The, when the tract was approved, one of the requirements was that a building envelope be established on each lot. These two lots, for some unknown reason, didn't have the building envelope extend to the edge of the property and, and at that point, the standard non-coastal zoning ordinance setback requirements would apply. And so the applicant is requesting that that happened for these two lots and staff hasn't identified any adverse consequences of doing so and it would make the development similar to what it is now and similar to the other lots on the, on the property. There is no change that's being proposed on the side slopes of this development which are designated to remain in open space. So that in essence is the project before you. Because it is a tract map amendment, that's why it comes directly to your board since you were the approving authority ultimately for the tract map.
And this came to the Santa Rosa Valley MAC and it was approved by the MAC or recommended for approval?
Yes, it was recommended 3, 0, 1, and 1 absent at the Santa Rosa Valley MAC at the most recent meeting.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment cards? Not seeing any. Are there any questions from the Board of Supervisors? The information is in our packets. Not seeing any questions. Does the applicant want to speak? Not seeing any applicant cards. Okay, so I think with that then, and with staff recommendation, a recommendation to the Santa Rosa MAC, go ahead and make the motion. Thank you. We could all vote? And that is approved. Thank you all very much. I know there was a lot more work behind it than what we just discussed, but I'm glad to see. to see it was settled. At this time, then, instead of coming back at 1:00, we're going to come back at 12:00 for the last item of the day. So we'll be back here and then take a short recess until 12:00.
Madam Chair, is that, that's at 12:00?
We will be back here at 12:00 for our last...
For the 1:00, okay.
...item on the agenda, which would have been 1:00, but it's now going to be 12:00. We give our Board of Supervisors meeting, and we are here to hear item, it was 1:00 PM, but we've moved it over to our 12:15-ish. And this is, let's see, item number 30. Item number 30, and this is on the continuum of care with the Child Welfare System. Good afternoon, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Barry Zimmerman, Director of the Human Services Agency, and this will be a joint presentation. Myself, along with me, will be Elaine Crandall, Director of the Behavioral Health Agency, Mark Verilla from Probation, and Rego Vargas from Public Health, all which are impacted and involved greatly into the CCR effort, which is the Continuum of Care reform that is reshaping the way we serve foster children. Also, in the audience, I just want to give a shout-out to the staff that have put in tremendous amount of work over the last, really, year, and plus, in, in some areas, to prepare, to get us ready, and to continue the hard work there. So we recognize everyone who's involved with CCR in some way. Can you raise your hand? Go there. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there's a tremendous amount of work effort behind this that is going on that you need to be aware of. Today, we'll go over a little bit of overview, the tenants of CCR, some of the major changes, where we've, what we've accomplished so far, and where we're headed, and then what the next steps are, and, and what we look forward to coming up on January 1st, actually, the year of 2017, will be a transformation year for us here. To refresh your memories, the CCR, the tenants around CCR are prioritizing home-based services for foster children, that, in a nutshell, that shelter care or group home care is going to be minimized and transitioned into a different structure, different service modality, and, and that will be a transformation in which services will have to be delivered in a home setting, and that's the primary thrust or goal of the, the reform. As well as, our approach on how we deliver services is also changing significantly to a, an integrated team environment, as well as the integration of services as early as possible, in particular, mental health services into the lives of these families, to give them the best chances to heal and to reunite. So, along with those changes are areas that are new mandates on, on expectations on how we're to deliver services. Family team structures is one of them. The transition from shelter or group home structures, and then the services and the service requirements that are going to be provided to the children. This, tenants of this reform started in, actually, 2015 with the rollout of the resource family approval process, known as RFA, on how we train and certify foster parents. And that's been rolled into this, this bill, this reform effort, and it will, this year has been a planning and setup, and then it will start the actual implementation and rollout as a transition in 2017, and start evaluating it from that point for, afterwards. So here's some of the, the key milestones, just to give you an idea, that to what is transforming and what is happening within the system as a whole here. And we've kind of outlined the matrix chart of saying what areas are impacted through this, this particular effort. One of the, the key efforts that was initiated in, in CFS and was planned, actually, before CCR, was an effort to do family preservation work, and, and to set up a structure and actually dedicate resources to this modality of service, to, to intervene with families as early as possible, and to set up safety structures within the family so they don't have to come into the court involvement there. That has been an initial effort that has been piloted, and it has been very successful so far, as we've worked it since January of this year. We've had about 17 families that qualified for family preservation and not court involvement activities, and over 50% have successfully completed those plans and, and have been resolved of further commitment on our part. So that is a promising practice that we're, really would further analyze, as well as to resource appropriately, since that, that will help divert those families that don't need to come into the system into services that they'll get and not to be engaged in the full system, which is very resource-heavy. The, so family preservation is an upfront activity that, that we're focusing on. Now, as they come involved into the, the system there, this is where the CCR reform is, is making changes, where it's a family team structure around each case. So each case will have a team environment, which will be a composition of the family members, the interested individuals in the child's life, as well as the social worker, behavioral health clinicians, mental, public health, and other service providers that may be relevant in order to assist and, and develop a plan around this family structure. So those are mandated activities and a mandated structure that, that will be required to deliver services in that, that fashion. In addition, another area that has been developed is the mental health screening and services, and we'll hear a little bit more in detail with Elaine's presentation on that. But we've agreed to that all children are entitled to be screened and assessed for mental health services. And so that, that is a, a huge step forward, and it, so it's just not on an algorithm basis or on a, on a, a basis that a social worker might determine. It is an expectation of the system that all children will be touched by a mental health professional to assess their, their needs fully. This is important because it helps our structure on early engagement and, and getting services in there as early as possible, so there's no delay in, in assisting the family. I think our approach is, is going to be recognized as, as a very innovative model. Matter of fact, it, it will probably be a model that looks throughout the state on how we're, we're looking at comprehensively addressing all children and our early engagement activities. Yesterday, I was fortunate to participate in a hearing on the, the state joint hearing on the use of psychotropic medications with foster children, and, and some of the difficulties that were described in that meeting. This, our approach will minimize and improve upon a lot of the gaps that they were seeing up at the state and throughout the state. So there's a lot of encouragement and, and a lot of positive direction that, that is going on in the development of that structure.
Could, could you elaborate a little bit more on how that coordination can help in reducing the amount that's used with foster children?
Yeah, by, by assessing and engaging all children in, as the earliest point possible. We're not waiting for a child's crisis to develop, in which more intense services would have to be rendered at that point. So the, the objective is trying to get mental health services upfront, early, and, and at the least acute level, some intervention, so, so it prevents or ameliorates further issues that might come on down the line. So right now, the system, and the system statewide, is that intervention occurs based on episodic events of the children, that they have to actually hit a, a critical level. And once they hit a critical level, then the intervention and the use of psychotropic medication, as well as other interventions, are more intense than they, than otherwise could have been if we could have intervened and prevented some of that crisis situation. So that's the hope and the, and the theory behind it, which, which we're, we're very encouraged that that could be the likely outcome.
And, and just having the services, so we lessen the, the prescriptions, you know?
Absolutely.
That there are other ways to do it than just relying on medicating when there are those issues. So it just seems like there has to be a little bit of that at that end, too. One, you obviously want to catch it when it's early, but also not have the reliance on that so freely.
Absolutely, and that, that will be the intent, and that, that, that is the, the purpose of the early engagement and the assessment, not, not to just assess for, for the issue for the use of psychotropic medication, but psychosocial activities and treatment that are other than medication that, that can, can be developed and, and put into the child's life. So that, that is the objective and purpose and goal that, that we're, we're developing here in concert with how we're going to treat children. And, and we'll, more will be developed as time and resources and understanding the greater needs of those children become known to us, and I think it will be very positive for us here.
And the basis for that is just the incredibly high percentage of children that are being placed on those, right?
Yes.
In, in that population?
So group home transition is a big milestone and a big transformation that, that is required of CCR. So all, all current structured group homes are going to be required to transition or to change their, their business modality into something new. They, they will have to transition into short-term residential treatment programs, which change the criteria for eligibility of entry, as well as programming and treatment services that can be offered, and the time period in which a child can be in a structure like that. So that is, as of January, the new model that, that will be in place. Now, we do have a little transition period that, that allows us to kind of grant a waiver for existing group homes that are making progress towards becoming credentialed and certified and entering into a, a contract with behavioral health to provide those services. There is a time period that we're allowed to waive the, the criteria and let them continue on under their current structure, so...
Barry, the, the biggest change for those group homes is that they're, they're, they're going from long-term placement to short-term placement.
That's correct.
I just want to be clear.
So it will be limited to 180 days without further exceptions.
Barry, is the, the parents that have children now, that have not had training, how do we provide the training to those individuals?
To the, to the group homes that have children?
Yes.
So the group homes themselves will have to make a decision whether they want to become certified as an STRTP. So they'll have to make that decision. Our obligation is to work with each of those children in the group, group home structure and see if we can get a plan to, to put them in a home-based type environment, where they'll receive services in that home-based environment.
And when they put them in the home base, individuals that are the, are going to run in those homes, they get training also?
They will get training. That's part of their training that we're doing, and that's emphasized a little bit later with our, our foster parents and additional training with them in trauma-informed practices, on how best to work with biological parents in the, the therapeutic process of reuniting families and so forth. So that's additional training that we're providing to the foster parents as well.
Okay.
In addition to that, foster parents are not to, to be necessarily treatment providers. That's where behavioral health professionals will be required to actually work with them in those settings as a professional environment to, to treat the child and to work with the child's behavior.
So it's a partnership between the...
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have two questions. It is a big transition going from long-term group homes to the short term.
Yes.
And the, the two questions I have is, one, what happens if there isn't a placement after a certain amount of days that you're allowed in, in the short-term group home?
Yeah, there, there is an exception that we can grant at, at, it would be my, my level or Judy's level to say there's an exception here, and then that has to go to the State Department Director to approve an extension beyond 180 days. So there is a little window there to have children stay longer than, than 180 days. But that, that will be reviewed every 30 days to assure that it doesn't become a long-term placement unnecessarily.
And the other, is it the home that isn't allowed to have a child for more than the 180 days? Would it end up in a potential situation where the child will just be transferred to another group home that's got another 100 days on it? Because I'd hate to have that happen.
No, that, that, that would not be a...
Okay.
...an acceptable practice and, and allowed. So in a group home environment, if they do reach the 180 days, there has to be a justifiable cause of why the extension would occur. Now, we do know there are some children that, that have significant behavioral issues and are very ill. And, and so the, the state is now looking at that of how to write regulations that account for that small population of kids that we have to still manage and, and, and work with under this new structure. So there is a little bit of a structural problem with the current law, and so that, that will have to be addressed in some technical cleanup. But, but as a safety net, we have an exception process that we can go through.
It's, has it been tested before? I just worry about it a little bit, because you have the, some of the hardest-placed kids are the ones that are in the group homes.
Absolutely.
So how do you resolve that there isn't a group, you know, it's hard to place them? And so I just wonder if this, if we've done this before, and it does seem like you do need to have some leeway.
It, it necessarily hasn't been done in this fashion before, and so that, that is going to be a challenge, and that, that is one of the major challenges for us, is, is how to deliver enough support services into a home environment that can maintain that, the safety and the stability of that child. That, that will become the issue. And so we'll, we'll have to be vigilant in, in understanding that and communicating clearly to the state our actions, so, so we can act appropriately. And, and that, that is the, the big thrust, the big change, that I would say, in really the mental health service component of integration, is that it's vital that services are integrated into these residential environments in order to assure that the child can be safely placed there. So, so those are some of the big risk factors, you might say, but, but...
It's definitely going down the right path, particularly if the services aren't just for the child, but the family, you're helping a family unit, and I think that's usually where the root of the issues are. So it gives us a greater opportunity for success, I would hope.
Yes, it does. So as I said, we looked at also the understanding of how the children are going to be serviced, and I'll explain, we'll show you a chart on, on how they'll be, and I hate to use the word categorized, but they'll be placed at, at a certain level of care and deliver, and certain expectations of services will be required based on the level of care that the child is assessed at. So we are looking at the treatment services and what it would take in order to fulfill those obligations there. So these are the mandates that go into more detail of, of the system and where we're headed. In particular, what I just referenced was the level of care expectation by child. So each child will be assessed and, and determined on what level of care they should be receiving based on the, the condition of the, the child, the needs of the child, and the placement of the child. So we've, we've kind of categorized out, so you can get an understanding of the magnitude of our caseload. This is how we best estimate how the children will fall between the level of care. Level care one would mean that it's a mild, occasional behavioral issue with a child, but, but the, the least in need for intense or services would be a level-one care child. Level six would be your STRTP, your most, child with the most issues, the, and the, the one that needs the most intensive intervention. So in our caseload, the majority will be down at the lower service component level than pyramid up to the most intensive level of, of services. With that, in order to provide the, the required services, the state has outlined specific work, workload requirements for our social workers in, in these areas. So this is the chart that represents that a little bit.
Barry, if you could go back just real quick, please. On the previous slide, just real quick.
Yes.
So just to tie it into the work that, that HSA and Behavioral Health have already been doing on KDA in particular, that required two main things. One is that all children be assessed for mental health needs, and two, as I understand it, primarily children in the four through six category were the ones being targeted. And now this would expand it to include the one through three, sort of the lower level...
That's correct.
Okay. Just to fill it in with KDA.
Yeah. So based on the level of care, each child will receive an expectation of services, not only services for treatment and the type of services, but also the casework around that child and our obligations to work with the child will change. So by level of care, Level Care 1 is basically the service modality and services that we offer today. So we have a caseload ratio target of about 18 to 1 is our ideal goal, and that's what we work with trying to resource it at that level. And that fluctuates over time, but the requirement is, a case plan will be developed, services will be given to the child based on the acuity level of that child, which should be mild on a Level 1. And our visitation requirement would be similar today. Once a month, we face-to-face meet with the child, check the progress, and so forth. As we increase in the level of care, the work expectation and service requirements change. So with Level 2, 3, 4, 5, up to 6, those change. So like in Level 2, the caseload ratio has changed to 1 to 16 because now not a monthly visit for caseworkers, it's twice a month, and so forth and so on. So, for example, Level 4 child would receive two monthly face-to-face contacts and a weekly phone call or live video session. So the caseworker's vision into that case would be much more frequent and much more involved on a mandated level, and so thus the caseload ratios change there. So we will monitor that and work through that as best we can. That's the state's initial guide that they have there. It is a mandate. As far as the work expectation, it is a Prop 30 issue in our mind, and so we are working with the state to discuss what that means financially. And so we're continuing that dialogue.
Just from an effectiveness perspective, it seems like a good idea, right?
Absolutely.
I don't know if that's how we would do our cases anyway, if it's just split, you know, by numbers, but actually by difficulty, I think is a good way.
Yeah, so I think the strategy is good. The question is, is that the right level? And that's what we'll have to determine over time on where we're at with the state and input there. The upper-tier children, 4 through 6, is, would, based on this structure here, about a third of our staffing would go to about 25% of the caseload. So you can understand that, okay, a greater number are focusing much more intense intensely on the upper-end children, which is appropriately so. So that kind of gives you just an overview in a very summary fashion of all the efforts and some of the transitions that will be expected on us and on many partners to make this successful. I will now turn it over to our partners here, and first we'll hear from Elaine, and she'll go over some of the area that I've referenced on the mental health services and what we intend to accomplish.
Good afternoon, Chair Parks, members of the board, CEO Powers. My name is Elaine Crandall, and I'm the Behavioral Health Director. Thank you, Barry, for the introduction, and as you can see, this is a multi-agency effort. And there are, I just also want to send a shout-out to people who are not in the room today. There has been tremendous work on, you know, from people from our fiscal offices, our contract offices. It really has been multi-agency, multi-layer effort. And I don't want to embarrass Barry, but I do want to say that I really am personally very grateful for his leadership in bringing these multiple agencies towards a single vision with so much enthusiasm. I can tell you that the Behavioral Health Department enthusiastically supports and looks forward to the work we have together for our foster children. So as Barry mentioned, as part of this system transformation, we also have a number of mandates and expectations. So first of all, we're going to be increasing the numbers of children and their families that we will serve. We are expected to, we anticipate serving another 700 assessments of children family services children in addition to the 500 we're currently serving. We estimate 60 additional mental health adults' assessments per year, which is double our current rate. It is suspected by anecdotal data, this is nothing that's been measured so far, that the majority of children family services parents and caregivers, it may be as much as 70%, may be struggling with substance abuse issues. As mentioned, all of these assessments and treatment will go to the youth and their family and caregivers in the home or in the field. Our assessors will be trained as generalists who can speak to an array of services so that we can make recommendations on the most appropriate level of need and type of need in a timely manner. With the increase in assessments, we do expect to see an increase in the need to administer and monitor medications, just due to sheer numbers of new cases. We will also need to case-manage and coordinate all those needs as well. We will be attending all, every single family team meeting, and we're expected that to occur at least quarterly for each youth. And on the administrative side, behavioral health will need to certify, fund, and contract newly-licensed therapeutic facilities, such as foster care providers, therapeutic foster care providers, and short-term residential treatment programs. So this is a similar illustration that you just saw Barry go through with the levels of care. And what we've done here is to illustrate by the levels of care, to the right in the blue box are the types of services that behavioral health will be providing. And based on the assessment of each child, the appropriate selection of methodology will be determined and provided as needed. So once again, we're talking children and their families.
I have a question, and it might be a Barry question, so whoever. The state has been the licensing go-to for group homes, but now you're saying, Elaine, that we'll be that licensing?
We'll be certifying for short-doll medical billing, so we'll certify the units or the programs so that their families can do what's called collateral services, which be working with people who are important to the child and gathering information and making recommendations. On top of that, we do services. But for them to do that, they have to be certified. The homes have to be certified.
Okay.
Licensing is a whole nother issue.
Yeah, but, you know, in particular with the STRTPs, the licensing and credentialing is changing down to the county level. So in some respects, and so there'll still be a dual relationship with the state, but the bigger part of it is down on the county, on the contracting for them to provide the provision of the services. So I think it's going to be fairly simple that the state's going to check off that they have the credentialing from a national association, and they want to do this, the heavy load and the work requirements really on the mental health contracting side in the STRTPs. So that is an issue, that is more of an expectation than in our group homes today. And so that is an area of concern that we'll need to make sure CSAC and others are aware of when we come down to the need for that.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, if I may, on the Certified Therapeutic Foster Care Provider. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? Because that's kind of a, maybe a new concept and a...
So foster parents will be trained by the Behavioral Health Department, and they would be providing what's called unlicensed services. So they wouldn't be providing clinical services, for example. They'd be providing unlicensed services. So it would be interactions with parents, schools, other persons who are important to a child's life, and assisting the child and their families, linking them into other services available into the community. And all of that is billable under short-doll medical. So on top of the licensing and the funding, and we are also provided to provide a daily rate, and then we work with them to bill. So on top of the licensing and certifying, we will also have to review their notes to ensure that they meet the requirements, so there's utilization review as well. So it's a pretty strong administrative component. This also is a corollary to Barry's slide, and you can see a little bit of similarity on Level 6 in inverse proportion, and I'll describe that in a moment. So Levels 1 and 2, this is caseloads, will be, for those children that, on a clinical level, based on what the experience of our child welfare system has shared with us, will probably benefit most from short-term intervention. We're going to estimate at about 60 days. Based on what we know about treatment, we expect that a successful caseload would be around 20 to 1. Levels 3 and 4 are where we are providing services now, and we're finding successful caseloads at about 18 to 1. This is our KDA program that's occurring right now. Level 5 and 6, Level 5 is going to be where youth are going to be in therapeutic foster care placement. Services here start to get a little bit more intensive, and so you can see the caseload drop to 15. And we expect also the length of service will be also more intensive, and we will probably see here more psychiatric involvement, more meds management, that kind of thing. Now, interestingly enough, you might think, then why does Level 6 go to 25? So actual treatment in Level 6 will be provided by the STRTP. As I understand it, Barry, and correct me if I'm wrong, our current STRTP, we only have one in town right now, which is Casa Pacifica?
That would be the equivalent, yes.
Yes, okay, an equivalent.
Could you tell me what that stands for?
Short-term, sorry, residential treatment program. So, but our work there, the reason the caseloads are a little bit higher, our work there will really be in the area of case management. So what we'll be doing is we're working closely with child welfare system and the treatment providers, which will be inside the STRTP, and be looking at timely transition into, hopefully, lower levels of care or appropriate levels of care. So it will be a case, intensive case management function. So it will not require the same level of caseload as, for example, the treatment would. In this chart here, what we've summarized for you is, the first column shows the new mandates, which is assessment and teaming services, and the second, sorry, and the second row of the first column indicates the additional mental health and ADP treatment. So in the second column, you can see the expected referrals for assessment and teaming will be 65 per month in the new system. We are currently serving about 30 per month. So the additional clients we expect to see will be 35 youth assessments, and we are estimating five to six adults, eight to 10 for alcohol, drug, and 65 family team meetings. So you can see in terms of just additional load, there's quite a bit of new requirements here. For treatment, ADP treatment and mental health treatment, the total number of foster care children that will need to be served is 1,200, and we are currently serving 500 children. So the additional would be 700 children along with their families for either mental health or ADP services. What's not listed here, of course, is what we have mentioned earlier, is the contract certifying, training, and monitoring of the short-term residential treatment programs and the therapeutic foster care homes. And finally, I wanted to introduce to you this concept that we were implying for about a year. The acronym is PaaS, and it stands for Priority Access for Services and Supports. And here, we worked very closely with our partners again to test out, we were a beta site for the state, and the concept there was to test the hypothesis if providing services early on and quickly to families, so this would be particularly for the adults of children in foster care, would hasten and improve the quality of reunification. So we started the program, and we went live in March after, it was almost a year of planning. And we've successfully, in the timeframes, as you see here, screened within five working days, assessment completed within five working days, and then services initiated five working days after that. So we are seeing children within 15 days. And the idea, and what we're able to do here is, we've provided four to five adult caregivers per month and provided them services, so that's a total of about 30 to 35. And our intention here is to apply this model in the implementation of the CCR to expand to the youth as well, not just to the adults. And this will expedite the identification of the appropriate service levels and improve the intervention outcomes.
Right, and are there any further questions I can answer?
Just one. You know, you have an enormous number of contracts that you have to manage. Now, you're going to have some more contracts, so it's not because you have this, but it just makes me wonder, what is your contracting specialty? Do you have people that they just specialize in contracts?
Yes.
And can you explain to me what that capability is that you guys have? How many people? What...
Sure. We have a contracts manager, and then she has, sorry, let me count, one, two, three, three staff that are doing specifically contracts, and they have two support staff. And actually, we contract, our total contracts, all in, if we include things like the Roadrunner Shuttle and our contracts with, let's say, consultants, not just service contracts, they handle 300 contracts. They prepare the board letters, they work with our operations people to look at the performance of the contract. So they have meetings on a quarterly basis with some of our providers. So, for example, they wouldn't meet quarterly with a contract with Roadrunner, for example, but they would meet quarterly with somebody who's providing therapeutic services.
Thank you.
Things like that. You're welcome. All right, thank you.
Well, Nick's here from Public Health, but I just wanted to conclude on that comment. One of the unique things of this system, the integration of all the partners is going to require the ability to get information into each other's arenas in order to act appropriately. So data and information is a big issue and an issue that we have a committee structure that needs to start looking at this so we can adequately understand the outcomes and where we need to put resources to drive those outcomes.
I have a note that I wrote here that I was going to mention at the end, but since you just brought that up now. Basically, we got some big silos that are going to get banged together. And to, and that's just going to take everybody's, you know, you know, you got silos, they're going to get banged together culturally, they're going to get banged together just factually, data-wise, you know, all kinds of things. But it's really going to be good for everybody if we can do this properly. And so to the extent that we can stay informed, the extent that the board can make it clear to all four departments that we want that cooperation, that that's, you know, that just let us know, and we certainly want to make sure that this works. I certainly recognize that's one of your biggest challenges that all four of you have got, you know, and I'm certain all four department heads here are really want to do that. But trying to get all of your organizations to support that is always a challenge and stuff.
Right, and I appreciate that insight, because that doesn't really come out in this context.
Right.
That is the reality of how to get systems to work together and meld two cultures to achieve a common goal, that we're not necessarily mandated to have that goal in our respective silos. And so that's our challenge, and I think we've got the team that is unique and really, you know, compared to a lot of other counties, we're well-positioned to make this happen.
And related to that is the governance structure, maybe Barry, you can touch on that real quick, to your point, supervisor. There's two sort of governing structures that I think really support that effort.
Yeah, so we've kind of set up a governance structure to try to monitor this and to perpetuate, hopefully, beyond this, that we'll have a collaboration of all the principals that are overseeing a system and how we're working together versus that we've just instituted this project and we're done once the project's done, that this can perpetuate as a life cycle there with working groups underneath to monitor and to keep the integrity of the system running. So we'll continue on with the public health portion, which is a key integral part of the system, the involvement and the ability of public health to do things and to provide services to the families is paramount for the success of those families. And Rigo will go over that on what we anticipate and how to... And Rigo will go over that on what we anticipate and how to make that happen.
Thank you, Barry. Good afternoon, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Rigo Vargas, Public Health Director. So I just have a couple of slides, actually, this one slide. So although we're happy to be part of the planning and the team that will implement CCR, our role initially will be somewhat limited, although we plan to be part of the initial family team meeting structure, but our role is more for consulting and to address overall health and wellness needs at that court-mandated initial family team meeting. We do have a specific role for public health nurses, though, when it comes to monitoring of psychotropic medications. And so, at the family team meetings, one of our active roles will be for that, monitoring of the medications and for overall assessment with regard to the health needs. But a separate process or team that we're envisioning ourselves in this process is on the right-hand side. So separate and apart from the court-ordered, court-mandated team meetings on the left-hand side, that is made up of the multidisciplinary team listed there, our public health nurses, we hope and expect, will play a vital role in keeping the family intact and addressing all their family wellness, family health needs, and as well as addressing the many factors that really contribute to some of these issues, some of the core drivers of poor health outcomes for families, such as poor housing, poor education, or lack of job opportunities, poverty. And many of these factors need to be addressed in addition to the court-ordered, court-mandated arena on the left. And so we see our nurses playing a vital role in addressing the wellness issues of the family to support them even after their initial court-ordered plan and efforts. And so we'll be addressing those various factors, and we hope to be able to draw down some federal funding that allow us to match the services and the staffing for our potential role in this very important program. Our core role within this team on the right-hand side is to do ongoing home visitations, home visitations to make sure that there's wellness opportunities and that the healthcare needs are being met, and then do referrals and intensive case management all around the family, child, and the entire family. So that's it for public health officers. Any questions? I'll turn it over to Mark in probation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Parks, members of the board, CEO Powers. So I just want to make a couple of comments before I get started with my two slides. Number one, the discussion about the silos, when you talk to folks outside of the county, certainly, the talk about the partnerships between child welfare, probation, public health, and behavioral health, sometimes are foreign concepts, but I feel like these are natural partnerships here in Ventura County. So when you talk about youth and probation, I can tell you about the wonderful partnerships that we have with public health and with HSA and with behavioral health. So to me, on the probation side, these are natural partnerships that already exist, and this is another one of those reform efforts that we've seen through the years where we just roll up our sleeves and we come to the table and under Barry's leadership and HSA's leadership, I think this is something that we can make work here in Ventura County. So I'm excited to be a part of it. Probation youth, we have roughly 40 to 50 youth on probation who are considered to be foster care youth. And the difference with the kids on probation is that some come from child welfare, some come from other sources, but these are kids who have been arrested for an act of delinquency, have been adjudicated for a misdemeanor or felony offense, and they're placed on probation by the court, and part of the court order is removal from their home and put in into foster care or into placement. So we've been monitoring the kids, we have a specialized unit, our placement unit has been monitoring these kids in the community for some time. So we're one of the placing agencies in that respect. Our kids are unique, as you see, Barry mentioned, the pyramid, it's actually inverted when you talk about kids on probation. So if you were to look at our profile of our youth in early September, what it will tell you is that the majority of our kids fall into the higher level of care, Level Five or Level Six, the very intensive level of youth. Roughly half of the kids that we have in placement right now are out of the county, with three kids out of state. Now, we do our best to try to keep kids in the county, because we believe that having kids in the county, you have access to family and your support systems here locally. But unfortunately, because of the unique needs that some of our kids have, sometimes the facility or the location which offers the best approach for that particular area, sometimes out of the county and sometimes out of the state. We have the same requirements of visiting youth, whether they're in county or out of county, so we do have probation officers that travel out of state once a month to make contact with our youth in out-of-state facilities.
Could you, STRTP?
Yeah, short-term residential therapeutic programs.
Got it, thank you.
So when we talk about probation and knowing that this reform effort was coming down the pike, CPAC, Chief Probation Officers of California, we tried to get in front of it, and knowing that it's going to have a big impact on our foster care population. So in separate discussions with CDSS, California Department of Social Services, we were able to get, not an extension, but at least an implementation date one year past the implementation date for other kids in the foster care system. And the reason for that is, we believe probation youth have the regulations that all foster care kids have, but in addition to that, they have rules and probation terms and conditions that have been put in place by the delinquency court judge. Most of it's focused on treatment and reparations to victims and a variety of other things that we have on the delinquency court system. So we were able to push the implementation date for probation youth back one year, but I can assure you that hasn't stopped the amount of energy and resources that we've put in since the very start to be at the table along with all of our other partners talking about this in that way. When we're ready to implement.
So Mark, then the other agency start before you do, is that the way it's going to work? And then you phase in?
Implementation date is September, or January 1st, 2017, for all non-probation foster care youth, yes. So we'll have an additional year to plan for our population to meet those particular regulations.
So it's a phase-in approach then, for you?
But I can assure you, we're at the table, having discussions with our partners regarding how to implement this. We just have a little bit more time.
Okay.
And continuing along the same theme, we will continue working with behavioral health, public health, with HSA, to make sure that we're putting the kids in the right levels of care and making sure they have the appropriate levels of implementation. On the probation side, we've initiated probation work groups where we're pulling expert, folks with expertise throughout the state to come together in Sacramento on a regular occasion to talk about impacts to the probation system. I'm proud to say that Juanita Higgin, who is our supervisor over our placement unit, is one of the representatives on the statewide task force. So not only is she lending her expertise, but she's bringing some of that back to Ventura County to help probation agency with the implementation. And for the first time, the state has set aside funding for probation in this year's budget for assistance for this implementation on the probation side, which is fantastic. So our county allocation and what we've applied for is over $200,000, and we put a plan in place and submitted that plan on September 1st. It'll come to your board next Tuesday as a consent item with the plan attached, so you can see where we're focusing on spending these resources. But primarily, we as a team have come together and identified gaps in terms of what we see are going to be issues for implementation on the probation side, adding resources for transportation, and adding resources to help supplement the cost of general fund positions we've already put into place to help with this effort, and also to allow some flexible funding for families. Things come up where it would be nice to have some funding to assist families, because they play a big, key role in the implementation of CCR, so.
So Mark, are you going to have to add staff for that, or do you have staff, are you going to add it to current staff?
You know, that's a really good question. Part of our plan is not to add additional staff in terms of full-time FTEs, but to utilize or help pay for some staffing that we could use to help with transportation costs and other things that we think our probation officers are going to need in order to do their case plan and the implementation of CCR on the probation side. So we're not asking for any FTEs. One thing that we are talking about, and we're mirroring this on what HSA is doing, HSA has a classification called the Case Aid. We think that that is something that could be replicated on the probation side, so we're looking at ways that we can create a probation aid to assist.
To assist with that.
To assist in the implementation of this, so. But we haven't asked for any FTEs at this point.
Good.
Are there any questions regarding the probation side? Just one other comment before I hand it over to Barry is that, you know, I've been working with HSA, and they've educated me a lot on system improvement plans and peer-quality case review and a variety of other topics, and evaluating some of the data on the probation side, the longer probation youth are in group homes, the worse the outcomes are. So the idea of shifting and trying to get kids back into the community, whether it be with relative placements or back with families, seems to be the way to go. If we want to achieve better outcomes, I think this is going to do it for us. It's just going to take a lot of effort and brain power in terms of implementing this, and I think you have the team to do it. You have the right personalities in place, and I think we can make it work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. And I'll just try to wrap up and summarize here really quick on the concluding aspects of the reform that we're all undertaking here. As this chart illustrates, you've seen this before, this is kind of in a nutshell, the thrust of the reform is to reshape the structure of group homes and to transform them into short-term residential treatment facilities, and also change the nature of our shelter that exists today. And I highlight that because that is a significant change. Today, Casa Pacifica is our partner in our shelter operation, and we are able to utilize the shelter on a 30-day cycle today. Under the new requirements, it'll be a 10-day shelter. And so, there are significant changes that require quicker turnarounds and expectations of the system as a whole. So those are big changes, but I think some of our strategies of early implementation, early engagement, and so forth, will help facilitate the decision-making that is required in those shorter timeframes there. We do have, this is the list of the group homes that we have in the county today, we've met with four of them, and we've spoken to the others, out of 10, I believe, 10 there, eight have indicated in one form or fashion that they are going to transition into an STRTP for our community, so they are making efforts to go through that process there, which is encouraging. Just to give you a context, today, those that are in either shelter or group home situations, our current census shows that we have 46 children in that environment today. That will be the highest priority come the new year, and the new expectation is to work a plan that would transition those children appropriately into the placement as required under CCR. So just to give you an indication, this work, we're not waiting for January 1st before actions takes place. 97% of all those children have a plan that's being worked and trying to develop a strategy in which would place those children in a lower level of care. To give you an idea, last year, June, this is June statistics that is up, last year, 12 months ago, we had 54 children in care, so we've steadily been dropping that downward. So that is the ultimate goal, is to minimize that number as low as possible there. There are some practical aspects associated with that that we're working through the state. There may be older children that are in group homes today, and the ability to transition them into a home-based environment may not be their choice, and it may be a matter of timing, of emancipation, of them going to the extended foster care, those type of things. So we do have timing issues associated with the transformation. We've spoken to the state, and I have spoken to the director, and they're willing to work with us as long as they know we're making progress towards the intent of the act and what's in the best interest of the child. So we're in very good position to understand what we need to do come with the implementation of this January. So that just gives you some more characteristics that I mentioned in regards to the transition of the children. So the system readiness, overall, we continue to work forward, and this will be a continual process, since it will be a system that will have to be monitored and nourished amongst partners on a continual basis, and we'll continue that. This isn't a project end date, it is a new way of doing business and an integration partnership that will perpetuate on, from now on, there. We do look at opportunities, and I put up their funding strategies in particular, that's multifaceted, because, you know, we're identifying needs and services that we want to deliver to the children and to these families, and getting those resources lined up are very important. As discussed a little bit in public health, one of the areas there, there was a line in that chart that Rigo showed, that one with the bubble chart of the team, that is the mandated part of it, where public health will be a participant in there. We have public health nurses integrated with the child welfare system, and there'll be a team partner there. On the other side of that line, there is contributing factors to a case that are vital to have resources or assistance in order for a family to overcome some challenges that they may have, that we call contributing factors. They aren't necessarily the factors that necessitated our intervention, however, there are factors around the case and the stability of the family that prevent progress to occur with that family. So for example, we may intervene with the family, and the family may find themselves homeless. And homelessness is not the issue for our involvement, but homelessness is an issue for reunification and stability of a child. So that would be a contributing factor. So what we're looking at, and that's to develop a system that can address these contributing factors independent of the child welfare involvement, that by giving the resources appropriate to the family to be in the best position possible for the success of the child welfare case. So that is one of the areas, and I'll highlight that as an innovative and also a best practice model, that we're looking to how to inculcate that and bring that into our structure there. We will continue to discuss and look at the design, putting together joint plans, communication with stakeholders is on the horizon to roll out, to get their input, as well as communicating on the new expectations, as well as continual communication amongst all ourselves. And then tracking and reporting is going to be a key area to monitor progress. Our overall goal is to have children cared for in a family setting. And as we do that, we know that we can heal children, we can repair situations in families so they can be re unified together where a child can thrive and be successful, is the overall goal. And we'll be measuring that, and that will be a quantifiable activity, mainly that we anticipate with our success that children will be in care shorter time period, thereby saving funds that we expend for long-term foster care and so forth. The intent of the act is to do primarily that, is to front-load resources and services to minimize the length of care that a child is found in the foster system. So I think the three main areas that I put that are very, I think, speak well for a Ventura model, if you want to call it that, is our comprehensive approach to children's and families, in particular, in assessing and driving resources in a timely fashion. Elaine talked about the PAS program. Elaine talked about the PAS program, and we've piloted that with the adults in the child welfare system, and I just, half the press has got some statistics on that as its pilot program rolling out. So for example, this is of the referrals, of all the referrals that are made through a screening system and so forth, it's not all the cases, but ninety-four percent are have an appointment within five days. I mean, that's a huge transformation from a system that was kind of a referral and wait-and-see structure. So our ability to be more proactive and engaging is been modeled, and we are going to then further perpetuate that for the success of all the children that enter our system. So that is, I think, a model that we represented throughout the state as the way we should approach these services. So comprehensive early engagement and our developing of a structured system that deals with contributing factors of a family are our three main components that will lend to the success and the health of these children. So that kind of gives you a nutshell of all the work, and I know you're very appreciative and understand much more the dynamics associated with a transformation like this and the need and the struggles that come from change of this magnitude. So I appreciate the support, and we'll continually keep you informed so we can hear from the policymakers on how best we can manage the system as we move forward.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So Barry, you're going to be the lead agency, all the other agencies are going to come to you, compile the information, progress, and you are going to send this mandate reports to the state, is that the way it's going to work?
I think, yeah, we'll be the, the expectation under CCR is that the Department of Social Services at the state level will be providing information and reports on the system as a whole.
But probation and.
Probation, they'll all have their respective reports.
And they'll bring it to you.
But more than likely, we'll be aggregating them together.
Okay, good, good.
Are there other questions? I know we have a speaker. I know we have a speaker. I do have a question, though. What would be helpful, I think, from my perspective, because there is so many moving parts and different agencies and a different criteria for the child, to actually have some kind of flow chart or otherwise presentation that says how it works for the child? You know, if they have this situation, it's this department, it's that department, you know, just so you kind of get an idea of how do all these departments affect that one child depending on circumstances? And I think that would help me because I can't quite see, well, where would, you know, this department step in on this and that department, you know, hand off, and that kind of thing is.
No, we can provide that mapping. I mean, we've, that's a system mapping we can do, and really how we integrate in a teaming environment and where the responsibilities go for respective treatment or what have you, we could do that.
That would be helpful, I think.
And so our next presentation, even before that, we can send that out, but we'll make that as an understanding. So this is the practical aspects of what a family goes through.
Right.
In this structure.
Kind of a scenario, for example.
Yes, okay.
Mm-hmm. Well, I do know we have one speaker card, and Steve Elson with Casa Pacifica, welcome.
Members of the board of supervisors, Ms. Powers, thank you for letting me say something about this initiative. First of all, I think it's important to note that the eyes of the country are really on California with the continuum of care reform. There's a lot of interest throughout the nation on how this is really going to work. And I think within California, Ventura County's been a real leader in stepping out and doing things in advance of what the initiative requires. I am really proud to be part of this larger partnership, and I want to congratulate Barry Zimmerman, Judy Weber from Social Services, all of the county partners, Mark Verilla, you've heard from, Rego Vargas in Public Health, and I think Elaine Crandall from Mental Health and her team have done just a yeoman's job in looking at what the needs of this community are in the way of foster care and preventing kids from coming into the system, and the kind of investment that is going to be required to really make this work, and the Board of Supervisors' willingness to look at that and to invest in these kids. I think it's hugely important for our community, and I want to thank you and all of your county staff, who it's a real privilege to work with. You've got some really great people, and I think I can say on behalf of the entire CBO community, the community-based organizations, Interface, Espirinette, Kids and Families Together, City Impact, all the ones that are working shoulder to shoulder with the county, that what's happened is you've really been able to pull together a group of stakeholders that are committed to making sure that we improve the lives of kids and families in this community, and especially focusing on our most vulnerable kids, and that is the kids in the foster care system or those who are about to penetrate the system. So what I see here is a real compassion and courage on the part of your staff, and I want to congratulate them and you and all the efforts that have been made to make this CCR work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett.
I just want to briefly end it on what we said sort of in the middle of the meeting, and that is that it's going to take a lot of leadership from the CEO's office down through the department heads, to the departments, to the CBOs, to bang all the silos together and come up with a great product for the kids of Ventura County. So I hope the other supervisors will make some kind of comment along that lines also so that it's clear that all the supervisors really want that to happen, but since we can't really make that a motion here right now, I think it's part of this. But wish you well, and I really appreciate these updates, and this is really important for the kids of Ventura County, so thank you very much.
Supervisor, I.
I just certainly agree with that. I think that we have made great progress in this county in that the silo issues and lots of work yet ahead. And I think that this has great opportunity, but it also has areas where there will be failures. And as we learn from those failures, and there may be times where we're two steps forward, one step back, whether it's because of state lack of giving us the tools we need or whether it's our own concerns with risk, always keeping that the goal is to do what's best for the child. And we know that we have wonderful families in this community who've stepped up to be foster families. We've had unification as our priority with all of this and still should be. We, just looking at that, to have what was presented on paper, all the right things headed in the right direction, but still a lot of heavy lifting to be done to engage that public that has to help us make this succeed, help us move this forward and make this succeed. So I applaud you for all of the early work already around the table and that there is the cooperation across the lines, and certainly will wish you the very best.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I support, you know, the continuum of care reform that was just presented, you know, I just want to thank the partnership between probation, behavioral health, HCA and HSA for their cooperation. I think it shows the partnerships that we have here in the county and how we work together, not only in this project, but many, many projects. I think this is great for our children, and I think, you know, that it's going to work, and I really support it 100%, and I'm sure it's going to work. And it was mentioned, too, you know, we're the leaders, California's always been the leaders in projects and programs, and I think this is one of them that we're going to be very proud of, but I do support it.
Yeah, Mr. Elson.
Let me just say one more thing that I meant to say, and I think the kind of collaboration that you're seeing with this initiative really stems from Mike Powers, and thank you for your leadership, Mike, really appreciate it.
Thank you for reading my text. Sorry.
And thank you to the CBOs.
You know, there are so many potential positive synergy that can come from this. You just think about just electronic health, medical records, the fact that you are able to have the ability to track these clients, these foster children, I think can really help by sharing that information of what you've experienced so that each of the department that works with them understands that history, and just having that history, I think is going to be a big help. And we've made great strides with the foster children, too, with their medical records now, too. So I just, I think being able to have all of this together, so you have a fuller picture when you're working with these children is nothing but a benefit, and obviously having those services that are needed, being able to come together. So it has a great potential, and Supervisor Bennett referred to it as banging it all together, but the whole objective here is to see that the child gets the services that they need and nobody falls through the cracks. So this hopefully will make that net, our safety net, even stronger. So with that, then, I guess this is just a receive and file. Mike has some comments, but I do look forward to a report back and having even a greater understanding of that, how these work in place to assist the child.
Thank you, Chair Parks. And you said, and nobody falls through the safety net. I think that's, this is so complicated. I think I've heard this now about seven times, and each time I learned something new. You know, I mean, it is complicated, and that's why it takes this right culture that you're establishing, that the departments and the community providers are establishing where we can figure it out together. It's not always going to be smooth, but one way or another, they're going to take care of these kids. So just thank you for the preparation and summarizing it so it's understandable, too. So, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we have a motion to receive and file by Supervisor Bennett, seconded by Supervisor Zaragoza. Now we have an opportunity to vote. Thank you, thanks for presenting it, and everyone for being here today, best of luck. And with that, do we have a correspondence calendar? I think that's it, then, then we'll just go ahead and be adjourned. Thank you.